Before. All right, we are missing Mr. Wells. And we have Mr. Lowe. I don't think Mr. Levy is coming tonight, Mr. Barilak, so you, I have not heard from him at all. So you may have to, you may have to slave at the galleys.
I am ready, willing and able.
All right. We'll see, there's Arn Wells, okay. So if leave, yeah, it doesn't really matter for the one on which Nick is recused because there's no vote.
Right.
So, yeah, there he goes, he turned on his lights. All right, it is now 4:00 PM. Oh, let's wait for Katie.
Recording in progress.
She didn't forget, was it four o'clock, did she?
No, no, we talked about it before we left the office.
Okay. I certainly talked to her several times today, so, but it was, we did not discuss 4:00 PM. There she is. We must have both clicked on her at the same time. It said she was joining and then she didn't come in. Okay, I am clicking on her now. And it's, all right. It says she's going to join as a panelist and then she doesn't come in.
I don't know.
Try you do it. Hello, hello, Lo.
Hello.
How'd you do, Patrick?
It says she's going to rejoin and she doesn't.
All right, Katie, if you can hear us, can you leave and come back? Sometimes that works. If not, we'll just enable her talking and she can dishevel her hair too, just like Mr. Hamilton.
We shouldn't spread the word, Margarita, that that's all it takes to get you to go off camera.
Yeah, because you know, okay, so she's there, I'm promoting her now. And it says she's rejoining the webinar. And she doesn't come in. All right, Katie, we're gonna just enable you to talk for now because we can't get you in fully.
Yeah, that sounds good. So I don't know what the, I just had to reset my password, so I don't know if that's part of the problem, but I can see and hear you.
Yeah, okay, and we're so cute and lovable, so it'll be fun. Okay, I've lowered your hand, raise it anytime you need anything. I will keep trying to promote you. And good evening, everybody. This is a meeting of the Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. It is the 4th of January. We will begin with the regular meeting. Before we do so, we would like to announce that Mr. Barilak will be seated, is the seated alternate and will be seated, we believe, for Mr. Levy this evening. In addition, we have had an application withdrawn, which is the first one in the public hearing. It is application number four, Chabad Lubavitch of Greenwich. That application at 270 Lake Avenue has been withdrawn. We are not hearing it tonight. If anybody didn't hear from us, just so you know, Chabad Lubavitch has been withdrawn. And with that, Mr. O'Donnell, we will begin with 111 Mill Street. I believe staff has advised you that we have reviewed the materials and we do not require a present, a lengthy presentation from you, if you would be so kind.
That's my pleasure, Madam Chair. I observed yesterday and was grateful for your keeping the conversation on track and reminding me and everybody else who's paying attention that this is a great opportunity for us to have a discussion and for my client to get a sense of how the commission's thinking and ask a few preliminary questions. So during the discussion yesterday, I really heard, I heard everything and I was grateful for the input and there was some great thoughts on technical requirements of the application. But I thought that the discussion centered around maybe three salient points and I'll start with those if you'd like me to. Number one was overall bulk of the design. Secondly, was to discuss parking. And third was whether this, whether the underlying owner and developer was a local entity and/or had they evaluated moderate income.
Actually, we have no interest in what, who the developer is. That is irrelevant to us legally. Statutorily, as you well know, we don't care who the developer is. We should not address ourselves to that second. The bulk of the building does not rise to the kind of concern that would override our need for affordable housing. So even though the commission may not feel that it is consistent with the POCD and with the retention of community character, we would not comment on the bulk of the building. We would send you to ARC. You can get some comments there to your discretion. The overall issue that we raised was a concern about traffic and the fact that you are not providing for parking. And that we believe that this is a significant issue to any resident in the building in terms of safety, in terms of them being able to live normal lives. You are not a TOD development. You are not close enough to the Port Chester station. And as you may have already checked, that parking lot, in order for you to use it, you have to go to the Board of Selectmen to get approval for that. And that parking lot, in our experience, is always very crowded, especially on weekends. And so I would not personally think that that's a terrific idea. Mr. McRae, you're more familiar with Byram. Would you like to add some comments to that?
Mr. O'Donnell, thank you, thank you for putting in the application. But as I was going through what you had provided to us, you know, there was a host of open questions and issues that I saw, technical, conceptual, programmatic, just a bunch of big issues. But as you were developing the proposal, was there any contemplation on a different concept to this? A 6110 following our own regulations or a smaller scale building, underground garage? You know, understanding the retail continuity of Byram and how it's all here, you know, there on first floor? Or even not a, not a housing development? Because I'm kind of looking at this saying, does this concept work for Byram? The parking assumption was a significant issue. The proposed onsite parking configuration, it seems unviable, you know, which would even to add to the parking load in the area into that assumption. And it's quite possibly lead to a safety in the street issue and the surrounding neighborhoods. Yeah, even just the configuration, the physical configuration of it seemed a little odd to me. As Mrs. Alvin said, you know, the assumption of using the William Street lot is proposed. As to go to Board of, the Board of Selectmen, it's going to have to be an MI. I'm not too sure if the commission as a whole would even support that idea, understanding the severe constraints that parking leads itself to in Byram, specifically with that lot. My experience is that lot is used constantly, you know, overnight by neighbors, during the day, the evenings by the retail and restaurants, those kind of things. The loss of any existing public parking, I think actually would be real blow to the local economy. And I think even put more stress on the neighbors and the residents of Byram itself. One thing I actually did, in looking through what you had given us, was struggling to see how the proposed housing worked. I don't believe there was any discussion of how many units of the 27 were going to be affordable. With that, I was just, you know, to me, it was what is the, what is the benefit to Greenwich, to Byram? With affordable housing, how many units would the town be getting in exchange for you building this building? You know, what are the upsides? What are the potential negatives, impacts, that kind of thing? Understanding that, I think it's almost an idea of sitting down with another, you know, with a blank page and thinking about just a lot of different ideas. We haven't done that already. Even, even reaching out to the, to the neighborhood and the, Byram neighborhood, other people to see what they think. I think the, the overall bulk, as you said, was an issue. It seemed that the building was, you know, four stories by what we are looking at. Where the average is, you know, less than three in Byram. The parking is a humongous issue. I mean, it's just, it even discussions with other applicants in the area just recently brought that to our attention. And as Mrs. Alvin said, I don't think, understanding, you know, who the owner is at all is important, but I think understanding from the local residents and what happens on that corner is critical to everybody here in Byram. It's always, always struck me as funny as kind of, Byram has two smoke shops. You know, what else does Byram actually really need? Do we need another smoke shop? Or, you know, you know, what is the thing that that Byram is actually missing or would benefit by having? Again, getting bit, getting back to that retail continuity. So a lot of things to think about. I'm not saying maybe go back to square one, but maybe there's a couple of different ideas to explore.
Those are some great, I'm sorry, those are some great prompts. Can I respond and?
Before you do that, we're gonna, I'm gonna build one thing before we forgot. Your ADA park, you have no ADA access for the residents. You don't have ADA parking for the residents. You're providing it for the retail. That to us is a major issue. You have to by law provide. So this thing of now providing parking, parking does rise to a safety issue. And we're not even talking about how you're going to work traffic, how the cars are, I think if you look at the public comment, people are asking how the cars are going to turn around safely. Okay, Mr. O'Donnell, floor's yours. Go for it.
Thank you so much. So a couple of things. I think the existing parking lot is there and I don't think we've had substantial traffic incidents with the existing 14 space parking lot, which includes one accessible. And I think this commission just approved development next door at an obviously substantially reduced scale with two moderate income units and a retail element below. So that's a portion of the property that's before you tonight. And I do appreciate the prompts and to think about how parking could flow better and how we could have it work better. One concept would be to essentially take the retail element that is proposed to be on the first floor now and omit that completely and replace that with some pedestal form of building that would have parking in. In concept, it should be, the site should have adequate space, preliminary review of that supports that it could, you know, you could have 27 spaces sort of in the space that's not consumed by the existing Byron Smoke Shop. And then what was proposed is a gym, as a tenant amenity gym, not as a public gym. So there would be some retail continuity, but I recognize that it wouldn't necessarily be available to the general public. I think the, the parking demand would be too much for that. So what that would do, in effect, would then, it would increase the bulk, but we could use, as we've provided on these initial architectural study, we could step back the upper floors to reduce the loom. Do you think at that point, if we took that approach to address the parking and traffic flow concerns and increased it by 12 feet overall, recognizing that what is now the fourth floor, sort of a half story that's set back and would be largely invisible from the street view? If that were to then be stepped back less, replacing the first floor that's displaced by the parking and then the same half story up? Do you think that at that point, the scale would start to feel untenable for the commission or would there be, would we still be close enough where it'd be a worthwhile discussion?
You know, if you're doing this as an 830G, you know what our obligation, what our mandate is under the law. It's gotta be health and safety issues or any other consideration that exceeds our need for affordable housing. You give us something that keeps residents safe, that gives them ADA access. If you could do also a consistency, a greater consistency with the neighborhood, maintain the retail continuity at the street level, that would be great. The commission is not allowed to require that of you, as you well know. All we can do is address issues that exceed the need for affordable housing. We are seeing some issues that we believe are important here. And from there, it's your call as to what, what your, your client would offer. I would suggest that you look at a 6110 because you would have a lower, this is for your purposes. You have a lower affordability requirement and the economics might be better for your client. I, and that's really one of the reasons we asked you. So we would give you the guidance. We can only, you know what we can address under 830G. So we're doing that and we're saying to you, this is a worrisome application for us. We see, we have some concerns.
I appreciate that. And let me say this, is the reason I'm, I'm authorized to have this conversation is my client has worked in town for 20 years. I met him when I reported to this commission and I found him at least responsive and reasonable with my requests. And so he's asked me to, to pose this to the commission and to get your feedback. And while the application may turn into an 830G application, today it's a pre-application and we're grateful for the opportunity to have the input and the prompts from the commission.
You've had an opportunity to hear as well, I'm sorry for interrupting you, but just quickly, you've had an opportunity to see the, the public comment. When we get an application that the neighborhood, that the residents support, it's a good thing. So if, if you tune into that public comment, that's a way of moving forward as well. What is the public? Now, you know, everybody's always, nobody ever likes change, so you can discount for that. But, you know, we always resist change, I think, the human race. But what fits, what works, what gives you businesses that are, that will thrive there, et cetera. And, you know, we've had, we have an 830G developer who tells us that he provides at least one parking space per unit, or he will not. Now, he says that from his own experience that he provides one to 1.4 parking spaces per unit in order to rent the market rate buildings. We're assuming here you're planning on providing nine affordables and 18 market rates. You're going to have a hard time renting those market rates if folks have trouble, you know, bringing grandma, getting home after surgery, all that, all those kinds of things.
What is the commission, does it, is it relevant to the commission? We, we're, everybody here and probably more than half the people listening are familiar with the minimum requirements of 830G. Does the commission have a preference? So of the 30% that are restricted, you know, the state has further minimum requirements that say, you know, a minimum of 15% have to be at 60% and then the remaining.
And if you don't do that 15 and 15, you don't have a set aside development and you can't do it under the state law. You have to do 15 and 15.
Right. So does the commission have a sense of, or is it valuable? Or who do I have that conversation with?
Your conversation, no, we don't have an economic development department. You're, you, you look at 6110, which is an inclusionary zoning regulation that the commission wrote a year and a half ago, Katie? And see if that works for you. We would like to provide greater diversity in housing in town for different housing prices. We think it's an opportunity in town. If you choose to do an 830G, we have to address the health and safety. I mean, I know you're a lawyer, so I mean, you know all this stuff. And we have to address the major considerations. Look at 6110. Look at whether you could do some moderate, you could do a mix and you could do moderate income. You've got school teachers in the area who would be well-served by a moderate income application under 6110.
So Madam Chair, we, we made a very close study. I was privileged to make the study of 6110. But what I think I'm understanding you is to say is that the commission could be interested in essentially, even if it came in under 830G, if the developer considered some moderate, my question was going to be, in terms of the mix of the 60%.
You don't qualify, you don't qualify for an 830G unless, I mean, Bob Barilak is trying not to talk. You don't qualify unless you do the 15 and the 15 at 60 and 80 of state median income, full stop. If you come in as an 830G, you know as well as I do that that's what you gotta do. So we would not.
And I can't exceed that. So we couldn't give you more.
You could exceed it.
We couldn't, we couldn't be 100% at 60% rather than.
We are not allowed to discuss your economics with you. If you came in at 100%, I don't, you'd need to run some numbers. All we're telling you is if you're at 30% right now and you're not providing any parking, I don't think you can go farther than that. We want you to have people be able to get to their apartments. There is a bus that runs very occasionally these days. I've talked to people waiting for that bus that goes by that development. It is running once an hour and people stand in bad weather and wait. It is not TOD. You cannot assume that people won't have cars. And Mr. Barilak, if you want to jump in, you go right ahead. I know he's biting, I see you biting your lip.
Mr. O'Donnell, I think one of the things you, you need to consider as you look at this and discuss things with your, your client, you need to find that balance of what makes sense for you and your client. But doesn't it become, you know, it's such a imposition on the, on the neighborhood, on, on the community it's trying to fit in with? That's a very difficult balance to find, but it seems to me that, you know, a successful application or something that would be accepted in the neighborhood would kind of work with it. What am I providing? Is there a good balance of what I would like to build as opposed to what I'm taking advantage of in the neighborhood? The 6110 may be one of the recourse is to find that balance. Taking a look at how your parking situation works on your site, getting in your site, off your site, you know, is it all contained, those kind of things? You really have to find that fine line. Right now, as we look and we look at this, this proposal that's in front of us, you know, it seems off balance completely. It's, it's, you know, it's assuming, it's assuming public parking. It's the scale, as we had talked about, is actually, you know, not part and parcel to the neighborhood it's, it's in. So that, 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 that thing really that you're looking for is that balance. How does it fit with the neighborhood? How does it provide into the neighborhood? And on the other side, what does it get back to your client?
Thank you. Mr. Barilak, did you have comments that you wanted to share?
I wanted to offer one more thought in case you hadn't, I hadn't occurred to you, which is that you might also consider, instead of coming in under 830G as a set aside application, considering waiting until the Housing Trust Fund is funded and functional and, and applying for funding there, which could potentially enable you to come in as a government assisted program. Katie can explain to you the details of that and why that would be of an advantage to you. But, but others, other developers who have considered it have concluded that it enables them, it gives them economic advantages that enable them to build smaller projects and still provide affordable housing.
But that's, you know, that's just another thought and all the different things we're trying to do to develop housing that's below market. I think to your point, Mr. O'Donnell, we have given you a ton of feedback. Katie, did you want to say something?
Yeah, sorry that I'm not on camera. I'm still working on this. I did just want to add to the discussion and say that any use by, you know, in this way of town parking would require municipal improvement to be, to go through the Board of Selectmen, because there would, I presume there would be a lease or some sort of agreement thereof. And obviously, a lease requires a municipal improvement. So that's something to be considered also.
And you would not be a, I think it would be a very long process going through the RTA, RTM, because you, if we're an MI, you would have to go through the RTM to get approval of the use. So if, if you're okay, Mr. O'Donnell, with all that feedback, I'd like to turn it quickly to public comment?
Absolutely.
Okie dokie. So our first comment comes from Mr. Al Shahadi and Mr. Shahadi is the Chair of the Land Use Group of the Byram Neighborhood Association. Mr. Shahadi, if you would go ahead.
Sure. Good evening, everybody.
Hello.
I've told you before, I'm a longtime resident of Byram. My name's Al Shahadi. I'm the Chair of the BNA Land Use Committee. We provided comments yesterday on behalf of the entire BNA and I will do a variation of those comments today. Headline news, which I don't think would be surprising to anybody, is the BNA is strongly opposed to this project for a variety of reasons. I wanted to flag a couple of inconsistencies in the application that I'm not sure anybody noticed. The application says there are nine retail parking spaces. The drawing shows five. My guess is the drawing is correct and not the application, but I'll just throw it out there as an inconsistency. Same thing is the square footage in the application is inconsistent. The total square footage is the same as the residential square footage. Both are listed as 30,752 square feet. The thousand square feet of retail space, I don't know whether that's included in both accidentally or if in fact this project is 31,752, but that is an inconsistency that probably should be corrected. I will start with positives. I always like to do that. First, I would like to say we appreciate that it is a lot line building. One of our visions for Byram is to continue the coherency of Mill Street around the corner onto South and North Water Street. And lot line buildings, you know, I hate the term, but activate the street, interface with the street very differently than if the first thing you see is a parking lot that comes into the building. The second positive, which I think, I hope I'm allowed to say, Mr. O'Donnell reached out to me today and I very much appreciated that. I've been in the position of trying to reach out to some other developers and not gotten much response. So his politeness and professionalism won't change my comments today, but I do look forward to the opportunity to participating in a conversation about what might work for the community. And that was one of the goals of the BNA. Setting up the Land Use Committee, bringing people together was that we could, in fact, be a partner and provide feedback to developers, landowners outside of these kind of formal presentations.
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Shahadi, I'm going to jump on something you said and give Mr. O'Donnell one more tip that he may not be aware of. We we approved an 830G recently on Ham Ave, which has retail on the ground floor. And under the, as we are interpreting the 830G statutes, they apply only to a residential development. Therefore, the commercial space in an 830G has to be fully compliant with our zoning regulations. And that is the decision. That is the precedent we have set. You don't get any kind of bonus on the commercial. I'm not even clear that a commercial should have, should exist in an 830G, but the commission reached a consensus that if it is there, it must be fully compliant with local zoning regulations. Thanks, Mr. Shahadi. Anything else?
Sure. So I stuck with the positives and part of the reason I'm here is to tell you what we don't like about it. So the commission may be less concerned about the scale than the BNA is. We feel that this is completely out of scale with the surrounding neighborhood. It's 10 feet taller and a full story taller than what is allowed. It is five times the FAR. I happen to look at the table from the 6110 and the dimensions are straight out of the physical dimensions in terms of height and FAR and number of floors are straight out of the 6110. Table one, other aspects of that table were ignored. That may give a hint as to where this project is going. But the dimensions are out of place with that neighborhood. We would wanna, we would wanna see it scaled back. Two, in more detail about what Commissioner Alvin just said, it would, it not only doesn't comply with the idea of having ground floor wrapped all the way around on both facades, it actually reduces what is there. There's currently a little under 3,000, maybe 2,800 square feet per the application. What will only be left is about 750 or about 25% of it on Mill Street. The other portion will be turned into a private gym. There's no retail on South Water Street. We support the commission's view that the commercial. I, we support the commission's view that the commercial regulations of LBR two apply. From our own perspective, we want to see more traffic, foot traffic in Byram and having ground floor retail is one of the best ways to do it. So we want to see a proposal that has ground floor retail wrapping around onto South Water. The building right next to it has ground floor retail and it would be great to see that continuity. Parking is the elephant in the room. And I think separate and apart from the municipal improvement issues, I would disavow the owner of any assumption that the generous people of Byram will gladly provide parking for free on already overcrowded public lots and on the nearby streets. I read the regulations as fifty-four space is being required, not the thirty-six in the application. The thirty-six in the application comes from the idea of building, say, on Mill Street where there is a relative balance between the residential and the commercial space. Here you have thirty thousand square feet of residential space to one thousand square feet of commercial or roughly thirty to one. I think that's well outside of the kind of mixed use building that would be approvable as one space only per apartment and you're much closer to the two spaces for two bedrooms, one for one bedroom that's in six one fifty-five, section one. And separate apart from what the town would agree with, I do a lot of real estate finance. I would, if I were the developer of this project, I would be scratching my head very, very seriously as to whether I'd actually be able to market these affordable or market rate without any parking. You are not going to be able to rent apartments unless they're substantially below market. If somebody has to park four or five blocks away or do in New York City where they're circling blocks for half an hour to find a parking space, that is not going to work for the tenants as well as not working for the community. There were some questions raised in yesterday's discussion session about the capacity of the William Street Lot. I don't know if Patrick has the ability to share one of the documents that was in the package, the document that's titled Toppo forty point one, has an aerial photo of the William Street Lot and the, and the property. And I, not a scientific study, I can't say that every hour, every day it will look like this. But if you do what I do and sort of squint.
Suffice it, suffice it to say that there's, it's pretty full in that aerial.
It's, in that aerial, it's about ninety percent full. There's seventy-three spaces, I believe, and there's maybe six or seven. So it's more than ninety percent full. That may not be at all times, but I think it's pretty clear to say that there are not thirty-six or fifty-four, whatever you think the requirement is, there are not anywhere near those spaces available here on any kind of a regular basis. So that's the, thank you, Patrick, for showing that. You can see right there that is taken sometime in October of twenty nineteen. I don't know what day of the week that was, but it is pretty full. There's swing space for a couple of people coming to visit one of the retail businesses, et cetera. There is not the ability to host twenty-seven new apartments. I will go a little bit further than some of the questions on the committee. I question whether this is an eight thirty G application. It can be turned into one, but there are some pretty clear requirements in the eight thirty G law as to what an application needs to do before it can claim an exemption for local law. There is no information in this application as to whether this is assisted housing or a set aside development. There's no information about the total number of affordable units, never mind whether it complies with the minimum fifteen, fifteen percent mix between sixty and eighty percent. And as I read that law, it's sixty percent and eighty percent of state AMI, not of local AMI.
No, we were very clear. We said that to Mr.
No affordability plan. There's no information on monthly housing costs.
Yeah, but okay, Mr. Shahadi, this is not a full application. If you want to join the commission, you're doing an awesome job. But just so you know, they are not supposed to come into a pre-app with a full application. You're asking for a full blown application and good for you. We'll do that at some point. Right now, they come in with a straw man and they say to us in a pre-app, what do you think? And what we hoped an applicant will do is say, dear commission, what are your key issues with this? Or ask us a couple of relevant questions. There's a bunch of stuff missing and that's why we didn't touch on it because it's a pre-app. We're not looking for full floor plans. We're not looking for a full site plan. All we want to do is talk to the applicant. So just take it from there because we've been on this a long time and I'm going to need to move on. And Mr. Kantorski would like to speak as well.
Yeah, I don't think that we that much work to just say how many units are going to be at sixty, how many units are going to be eighty. That's not.
Yeah, he's gonna have to, they're gonna have to be, because they have an uneven number, I'm gonna tell you right now, they're gonna have to.
Go up.
Right.
Yeah. So in our view, this is a grossly oversized building that's right now pretending to be affordable housing. So we do not want to see this proceed. We do not want the commission to be intimidated by the possibility that it is a eight thirty G and at this point just give what you're giving, which is a strong rethink.
Right. And I think, I think the, thank you, Mr. Shahadi. You did terrific. If you ever want to join the commission, just let us know.
The BNA is not, the BNA doesn't do any, you know, trades for future players.
All right. But thank you very much. You did a great job. Very thorough. Mr. Kantorski, you wanted to speak, sir. This is the head of the Byram Neighborhood Association.
I'm muted. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Kantorski.
No, you can't have Al Shahadi. We pay him way too much to speak for us. Actually, the guy is amazing and I'm sure you have been impressed by, by what he's done and said in the past. The only thing I want to say is, I thank you for the commission for, for, for listening to us. And the other thing is, I want to also join Al in, in, in his, in his thanks to Mr. O'Donnell for reaching out. We are most interested in the Byram Neighborhood Association and the quality of life in our part of town. And we really look forward to the ongoing conversation, to be, to being part of the conversation about this project. And we will lend whatever help we can to let Mr. O'Donnell and his client know exactly where we stand. And I, I thank the both of you.
Thank you. And so I think, Mr. O'Donnell, the BNA would be happy to meet with you and your client. And that's, we encourage that across the board.
Yes.
All right. Anybody else from the public wish to speak? Mr. Pop, if you would go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Kantorski, I kind of cut you off. Matthew Pop, a landscape architect. I live on Meade Avenue. Just a few quick comments with the parking lot, the aerial photo of the parking lot was taken, you know, I think six months ago or longer, longer ago. Byram now has two new restaurants, a new dance studio and hopefully a pizza place that's going to be opened up. So there's also additional traffic from those uses. Just for site planning, and then we, maybe it's too early, but I think the entrance needs, the site needs to be further away from Mill Street, South Water Street intersection. That's a busy intersection. There's always cars, it looks like getting into that parking lot that are waiting to cross over South Water Street to get in. So again, it should be further away. And then just the dumpster location deliveries. And I don't think you could have a dead end parking lot on the site. You know, if the park is full, someone drives in and they can't turn around or they backing out across the sidewalk and into the road again. So again, those are my comments.
Yeah. And I paraphrased you. I had read your letter this afternoon and mentioned to Mr. O'Donnell that getting out of the parking would be hard. Anything else, Mr. Pop?
Nope. That's all. Thank you.
Okie doke. So with that, I think we're done with the public comment and I, boy, Mr. O'Donnell, if we didn't give you enough work to do. I think you're all set, but please feel free to keep talking to Katie and Pat and get guidance and thoughts.
Absolutely. I'm grateful for the conversation. Thank you again, Madam Chair and members of the commission and our exceptional planning and zoning staff.
Thank you, sir. So our next application is for, it's also a pre-app. It's Twenty-two Baldwin Farms LLC at Twenty-two Baldwin Farms South in the RA two. It's for a final, it's, it's, it's around a hundred and fifty thousand in excess building. Mr. McRae is recused. Patrick, will you ping Mr. McRae when we're done? And I believe it's Mr. Cohen and he has courteously raised his hand for, for us. I've just brought him in. We're rolling right along. Okay, we went, we went twenty minutes over on that one, folks, so hopefully we'll do better on Baldwin and make up some time. So we are looking for efficiency from you, Mr. Cohen.
Will be.
And so be it, right?
Indeed. May I proceed?
Yes, sir.
Bruce Cohen, representing the applicant. This is an application, a pre-application really, in connection with the construction of a new single family house on six and a half acres in the RA two, two acre zone. And the reason that we are before you as a pre-application is we're going to need to apply for special permits for two reasons. First of all, as the chair stated, the total of buildings on the property to be constructed will exceed a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. And also, under the provisions of six ninety-five A eight, there is, there are indoor athletic uses in this new building that will exceed twelve hundred square feet. There's a swimming pool and a yoga room and a gym. So, Pat, if you could show the images that we sent to you and give you an idea of what we're talking about.
Do you mind if I tuck at you while you're doing that or do you want to keep going?
Let me keep going because it's going to be very brief and then you can talk away.
Okie doke.
So, so this is a aerial shot of the six and a half acre site that is on Baldwin Farms South. The next image is a kind of a blow up of that and it shows where the existing house and pool and outdoor facilities are now located. These are older, very outdated facilities and our client is going to want to build a new house roughly in the same south westerly location of this property. Pat. Here is the, again, this is the existing conditions. We've highlighted and read the buildings that are there now. There's a swimming pool further over to the east. Pat. And the next one shows where the new buildings are proposed in addition to the main house, outdoor pool and cabana. There's a garage and a, and a guest house. And Pat, this is a kind of a schematic of the landscape plan. The important part about this is that there are heavily wooded areas on this property that are going to be maintained. There's going to be quite a bit of additional planting. I heard it yesterday's briefing. The chair raised the subject of landscaping and we'll provide with our.
Just, just since you're on that, I'm going to go ahead and interrupt you. You've got, I'm looking at an existing maple that is near the guest house that is getting a retaining wall right by it and it's within its drip line. I think that that puts the existing maple at risk. I'm not going to go through the rest of the landscape plan, but you've got a couple of places where your construction is going to encroach on existing trees and jeopardize them. And just a chance for you guys to go ahead and look at that as you work. I also, you, you, I'm assuming that these footpaths you're making are not, they're, since they're mulch, you're not going to be creating impervious surfaces. As usual, we would love to see people go to meadow instead of the extensive lawns. And that's the only comments I have for you on the landscaping. I was just a little concerned about the, the encroachment below the drip lines. If you want to go to the floor plan, I have a comment on you, for you on one of those.
Let me, let me get back to your point, Ms. Albin, about the landscaping. My client is, my clients are equally concerned about the landscaping and the existing trees. And in fact, last summer engaged at Arborist to make a survey of all of the trees, all of the, the large major trees, including the one you're talking about. And so we'll present with our application exactly how we're going to handle that. Some will not be able to be maintained, but we are certainly going to more than replace what's going to be taken out in order to develop the property. And as I say, there's going to be a very dense wooded area that will be maintained in really a pristine condition. But we understand your comments, Ms. Albin, and we'll take a look at that wall.
There's two places where you have little walls that are going to be below the drip lines. Yes. And then, so go ahead. I interrupted you.
No, you go ahead. You had a question about the.
Patrick, could you go to the basement plan? Come to Tom, to Tom. Now I'm losing it. So I'm going to have to do it from memory. Basement plan, two staff bedrooms. There it is. Okay. On this basement plan, I, I'm sure your architect is going to catch this, but the basement, the staff bedroom that's thirteen and a half by eleven, it has access to that window well, which would give it fire egress. But I didn't scale measure it, but it looks to me like that egress right there into the window well is not a legal fire egress and you are going to have to widen the window on that side for them to get into the window well and get to the staircase going out.
Thank you for that. I guarantee when we come back with our plans, that issue will be addressed.
And that's the only thing I caught on the plans. I don't think, you know, this is, I think at this point, we don't have any issues with the, the layout that you have for your fitness facility. Does anybody have any issue with that? No, right? Okay. You only, okay. So those are the comments we have on that. Patrick, you could take it down. Unless Mitch, I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, do you want to go ahead?
No.
Okay. So on the plans, I don't think we have any other comments for you. I, how soon do you think you're going to be in with a final, with an application?
Pretty soon, depending on the commission's backlog of work.
We apparently don't have a slot till March. Could I ask you a favor?
Anything.
Could you calculate just for our education, this is just a little favor for us. Could you calculate what percent of your required green area your client wants to do with trees? We're just trying to get a measure of what we get. Trees as a percentage, tree canopy as a percentage of, of required green area because we're still working on the landscape regs. And I'm just curious, I want to kind of get a feel for what works for our clients, for, for your clients, I'm sorry, for our applicants. Just if you happen to not mind doing that, I'm just curious. Since they're trying to do trees.
I think I understand what you're asking for.
Katie will explain it to you. She knows where I'm going with it. And I just wanted to ask you if, just because your clients want to do trees, I'm just, I want to see what would be comfortable to somebody who is open to being more sustainable.
Yeah, we will take a look at it, Ms. Albin, but you better remember that this is a six and a half acre piece of property with a lot of existing woodland. It may not be a great precedent.
Yeah, we're just, we're just going to ask people as we go so we have a sense for, of what works for applicants.
Yep, yep. We'll follow up.
And we're also asking some other towns. Okay. I think that's it. Let me just see if you've got any other comments from the commission. Commission, do I have any comments from the public? Please raise your virtual hand. No, I think you're off scot-free, Mr. Cohen.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Could someone get Mr. McRae? And he's there and we have Mr. Tessie, who's going to have lots of fun with us tonight.
It's not over, promise.
Oh, we are always. All right. So now that you're in, Katie, I guess I can get rid of the second me from the meeting, right?
Can you hear me?
Mr. Tessie, we can hear you. Can you turn on your camera?
I keep trying. It's not, it's not. Maybe I have the same disease as Katie. I don't know.
I'm not going to touch that one.
No, I'm just saying, oh, can you do something about it from your end?
No, they disabled our powers in that regard. We used to be able to, let me just ask you to start your video and maybe that'll help.
What I had to do was log in manually, which I think is too involved for right now, for your purposes, Mr. Tessie.
Just talk, Mr. Tessie. We do know what you look like.
I would, I bothered to shave and put on a suit. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so I listened. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Tessie, I know what you may be having a problem. You may have your video reversed. Try switching the direction of your camera and then we'll give up on you. No, okay, so do this. When you're done with 80 Valley.
Yeah, I'll keep.
Leave the meeting completely and come back in when, to do St. Catherine.
Okay.
Okay, alrighty, okay, so.
I'll have plenty of time to work on it, I have a feeling.
Yeah, maybe not.
So, with, with regard to this evening, we're here before you to discuss the, on a pre-application basis, the addition of a single-family dwelling unit to a commercially zoned property, LB2 at the corner of Valley Road God be in, in Schofield Street. Schofield is primarily a residential street. This particular parcel, as, as you all have probably seen and looking at our application documents, is a rectangular piece extending from the, you know, about twice the length on Schofield as it is on Valley. On Valley, there is a two-family house adjoining the house. And it's connected to it is a retail dog roaming facility. Been there many years. The two units that are in the building are relatively small in floor area, one about 500 square feet, the other about eight or 900 square feet. They're both Section 8, as the commission members recognize, as I had indicated in my application. Along Schofield, for a number of years, there has existed essentially a yard with a, with a commercial nursery, I'm sorry, commercial nursery type of greenhouse. Our client, our underlying client is Bruce Warner. I know that's not relevant. From a practical standpoint, I think it's worth just mentioning to you that he has another building at 76, 74 Valley Road. And that is where his offices are, where his business is conducted. His goal here is to build a single-family house, is kind of a downsizing to, closer to town for him and his wife. They're empty nesters. So this building that's being purchased is not a spec building, if you will. It is designed to, if you will, stay in the family. And looking at the regulations as applicable under Section 6110, it would appear to me that what we would be doing is essentially because there are four or less units on this property with the addition of this unit, making one of those two units a MID unit, that pre-existing. That wasn't discussed yesterday, but I thought I'd put that out to you. Because by adding the third unit, I believe we will be required to have one MID unit.
Wait, why? Because you're 6110. No.
It's four, unless you change your regulations.
It's four or less, yeah.
So we have two, we're adding a third. I don't, we're happy not to have it. Just keep it at Section 8. I'll let, I'll let you decide that.
Katie, they can exceed the affordability requirements in 6110, right?
Yes, yeah, there's nothing from.
No, we're for, we're exceeding the affordability, but those are Section 8. I didn't know if you wanted to.
No, no, we're good. If you do two-thirds affordable.
Well, we'll keep them at Section 8, then we'll just keep them at Section 8 units. We won't go through the MID.
Unless it encourages you to fix them up a little bit.
He maintains them, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, I just said you're getting a brand new.
I mean, I heard the comments.
No, no, what I'm saying is you're doing a brand new spiffy building and why not spiffy everything? That's all I'm saying. Okay.
I'll talk to Mr. Warner about it.
Yeah, I mean, just, you know, why not? Yeah, no, I'm not saying it's not well-maintained. It's just kind of a funny thing that you're doing a one brand-new building and everything else is staying the same, which is yesterday. Okay, all right.
There's a lot of practicality to that.
Yes, of course, of course, economics play a role.
And I think the community is better served by a single-family dwelling. People can discuss their view of aesthetics. I know you saw more of an asymmetric type of plans. It was a little unclear to me with respect to the single-family dwelling, whether you wanted us, Mr. McRae, or didn't want us to first go to ARC.
You're going to have to.
To me at the end.
Okay, so you're going to have to go to ARC.
That's fine, that's fine.
Because it's a 6110. The issue is always that Mr. McRae doesn't like it when people go first to ARC. And sometimes, you know, we get him to cave and yesterday he didn't cave. He wants you to come first to us. So we're going to let him have his way this time was what we decided.
Mr. Tessie, I think actually a discussion with your client. Okay, I can appreciate the aesthetic of the, the new project. I think one of the things that most concerned me about this was that the new building is, is very contemporary, but the existing building really isn't being touched or remodeled or anything. If there's some thought to actually doing anything to that building, even, even just maybe updating something to it. Because I think actually bringing the whole corner together will be really great. You know, I know that, you know, the building is what it is, but, you know, could it be painted, any, anything, just to screw it up, just to give it up?
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
Mr. Warner, I think.
You know, that's not, we're just, we're just asking, asking to ask. I mean, it's not within our authority to make you do that. We'd like you to come back before you go to ARC. And of course, we have no problem with you exceeding the minimum affordability in 6110. If we don't have that sentence in 6110, we'll add it at some point, but we have no issue with that. We know we need.
Yeah, that's fine, but may I ask you, I mean, this is a relatively simple project. Why wouldn't you? So, the thing on relatively simple projects, you'd really say, we'll go to ARC, see what they have to say first. I mean, you're already telling us what you, what you're thinking is now, Mr. McRae. I don't think it's going to change the next time we come by, but I'll defer to you. Or we can, because if you're going to send us ARC after you you know what I'm saying? Or maybe you're going to decide we don't, or you're thinking that if we do what you all are comfortable with, we won't wind up at just trying to understand.
We're maintaining a little bit of consistency with the pre-app in the process. It's, I want to see what your final proposal is. Usually the pre-apps aren't as developed as you have here. So it would come back to say, this is what, this is what we're going to finally do. You have this quite developed here. I think if you, if you come back to us with there's any changes or anything, that's where we would catch it. With this, if you're confident there are going to be no more changes to the site plan as it's laid out, then I guess we could say, yes, go off to ARC first. Again, my concern would be, yes, you're concentrating on the back of the property. They're probably going to ask the same question, what's happening at the front of the property?
Well, that's, that's fair. I mean, in terms of the site plan, you can look at it knowing you need to meet the parking requirements. Just the physical characteristics of the lot are such that you're, I think that location's the only allocation for a detached structure to make the parking and access work. So no, I don't expect any real changes to the site plan per se.
There's, there's four spaces in the new building, in the garages?
Yes.
Okay.
Four spaces.
Are those garage spaces part of the front building as well?
It would be, yeah, the parking will be for a site, you know.
It's shared all the way across, okay, so.
We need to meet the parking requirements.
Right, I understand, okay.
Yeah.
Not to put words in your mouth, Nick, but it seems to me that you're striving for efficiency here. And, and rather than have the applicant go to ARC and then come, then, then the, the application comes to us and then you got to go back to ARC. You're just trying to short-circuit that, I believe, right?
Yeah, I think most of the time we.
We're on the same page here. I guess it's, what's the best way to, I mean, we're all on the same page. I was just going to say, given your, given your, your cluttered, probably a better word than that, schedule going forward. Yeah, I'm on the same page as, as that, Mr. Love, whatever's the most efficient for everyone.
Right, I think because you're so developed with your site plan, I, I think you can actually get to ARC first and see what they think.
Record that, Mr. Tessie.
Sorry. We're all on the same page.
I would just be very, very careful of when you get there, they're, they're going to look and say, what's going on here? And I think it's actually an understanding or having a thought as to what's happening with the front building.
Well, but it's not within the application, you know, and.
Yeah, I know that, I know that. And I think that's what's going to happen is that ARC is not going to see that, so.
And I would add that there's, you know, the old phrase, there's no explaining taste. And if this is an issue of taste, this is not an area in which I understand that we have any jurisdiction or authority or.
But as a matter of state, yeah, law, case law, you're right. You said it's problematic. But, you know, you work, you work with people. We worked a long time with the commission in ARC on the modern building. I mean, I don't know what people think of it, but I think, I think it turned out pretty good myself. But again, you're different people of different tastes. But thank you for all your input.
Mr. Barak, Mr. Barak, go ahead.
I have a question about your affordability. You indicated that you were happy to stay with the Section 8 that you've got. What kind of Section 8 is that? I'm assuming that's about your Section 8, which is the owner's election. And if you, if you come in under 6110, I think we're going to have to put a 40-year restriction on there somehow.
Absolutely.
Which you could satisfy clearly.
Well, well, I'll talk to Mr. Warner about it. I think he, he's had success working hand in hand. I think it's where you work hand in hand with the, with the Grinch communities.
Yeah, yeah.
On Section 8, and it's worked out very well, so.
I'd you from that, I personally, and I think from the commissions, we were better off with, with a Section 8 than we are with, with a mod for a lot of reasons. We're just going to have to work at the technicalities of how you, you qualify under 6110 if you, if you're, if you're using Section 8.
Well, that's why, again, right. It's interesting because certainly Section 8 offers what you want to see, the diversity of housing opportunities and in general, even a lower standard than, than the 80% of town, of town wages, so. And it is, I mean, as far as, I mean, you have no choice but to go over, under 110 in a lot of regards, not in all regards. There's no way to build a residential unit. No, I get it. There's no other regulation that talks, that speaks of, that speaks of.
Let me try again. I'm not trying to make an issue out of this.
No, no, you're, I think it's a good conversation.
Yeah, my point simply is that 6110 is going to require you to enter into a 40-year deed restriction. I think your Section 8 will satisfy that deed restriction more than satisfy. That's the only point I'm trying to make.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, no, I appreciate it. And I'll defer to your expertise, absolutely.
Katie, do we have that sentence in 6110 that if an applicant chooses, they can exceed the affordability?
No, but there's no sentence that says one can't do it. There is a sentence that says one can't go less.
Okay, we could always add it, you know, like we welcome people to be more affordable. Okay, Mr. Tessie. Let me just see if we have any comments from the public. I think you've heard enough. Commission, anything else before we go to the public?
I think if he, when he goes to ARC, landscape lighting, you know, the whole, the whole.
Trees, Mr. Tessie's trees, yes, please.
Well, there will be trees.
Okay, the first person who would like to speak is Carmela Covelo. Ms. Covelo, if you would, please go ahead.
Well, my concerns are.
Ms. Covelo, I'm having trouble hearing you. Can you get closer to your microphone?
My main concern is drainage in the area with this building being constructed.
In other words, you're concerned that water could go onto the adjoining properties?
Correct.
We will, our, our Department of Public Works is response, oh, good question, because are you at, Mr. Tessie, let me just ask you, are you going for a drainage exemption?
I'll defer to Mr. DeAngelo, who's the project engineer and that.
Because your greenhouse.
I believe it qualifies.
Well, then, we would ask.
Yesterday about the demolition of New York.
Yeah.
I will advise Mr. DeAngelo.
Mr. DeAndrea, that what we've seen people doing, they don't have to do a full drainage plan, but what, with the exemption, but what we've seen people doing is making sure that they address a concern such as Ms. Covelo's, that there be no impact on the adjoining properties.
I think everybody owes that to their neighbor.
I agree with you. May I record that? Oh, I did record.
I thought it was being recorded.
It was. Okay, so Ms. Covelo, we will make sure, and the applicant has promised us that he will address that.
It has already caused a drainage problem over the years.
Ma'am, I can't quite hear you. It's already been a drainage problem over the years?
It's already caused a drainage.
Yeah, okay.
On my property, yes.
Okay, so Mr. DeAndrea, who is the drainage engineer, is listening to the meeting and he will, he will take note. And he will, I, I will, hoping that he will go look at the existing conditions when it is flooded and he will address them. And we will push back on it. Is there anything else, Ms. Covelo?
Well, yes, over the years, the property hasn't been maintained the way it should have.
Yeah, we, yeah, we kind of said that.
Trucks were not allowed and, and they're there. There's vans there today. It just is, I'm sorry to say, but I don't think Mr. Warner has too much regard for people's property value and just, you know, it's what he wants first and not really regarding for the fact that it floods my property.
Okay. All right, okay, we will, I, I'm hoping, Mr. Tessie, that Mr. DeAndrea has captured all that. The concern about where the vehicles are parked. I think you're trying to increase the parking that's available and also that you ensure there's no impact on adjoining properties. Anything else, Ms. Covelo?
Well, this went to court in 2003 and it was, no commercial vehicles are allowed on this property, yet they're there every day. And being a senior citizen as I am, I don't feel that I have to police this on a daily basis. You know, there's rules and regulations that as a, as a very well, he certainly is a well-maintained businessperson and he should know that.
We will find, we'll find the court case, Ms. Covelo, because technically this is, this is zoned for, for commercial, for mixed use, or as we call it, or commercial. So technically, they would allow commercial vehicles would be allowed, but we will find the court case and find out what it actually says about the vehicles.
In 2003, that's right, it went to court.
Okay.
None of his commercial vehicles are allowed on that, on the property.
Okay, Mr. Tessie, you're going to have to find that and respond to it because I'm not aware.
I, I'm very aware of the case. It had to do with whether, the issue of whether the property was a construction yard or not. And based on Mr. Warner's use. I'm familiar with it. And the end of the day, it is a commercial piece of property. There is a greenhouse there. We can go on and on about it tonight, but Mrs. Covelo was that was upfront, 2003, she can be upfront now and Mr. Warner is going to make his application and you're going to review all the issues.
Okidok. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Covelo. The next person who has their hand up is Mr. Frank Murphy. Mr. Murphy, if you would, go ahead.
My name is Frank Murphy. I'm an attorney representing Mrs. Covelo, who owns the adjoining property at 78 Valley Road. And she has addressed already her primary concerns, but I'd like to go over them very briefly. The first that she's concerned about is drainage. During the time that Mr. Werner has owned 80 Valley Road, she has experienced increased drainage and flooding of her property. increased drainage and flooding of her property, including into a catch basin, which is towards the rear of her property. She's been required to create a situation where water has to be pumped from the catch basin after heavy rainstorms into the street. So we, we believe that a, a full drainage plan should be developed to divert water away from Mrs. Covelo's property, either with a berm barrier or catch basin of some type on eighty Valley Road. The, the second of her major concerns concerns the onsite parking. As, as mentioned, Wernert Construction has its office at seventy sixth Valley Road. Employees park on this property on a, on a regular basis. And we believe that the parking on this site should be limited to residents and patrons of the dog grooming retail use. There's also been situations where construction equipment has been stored. For example, as of yesterday, there was a a vehicle trailer parked on the site and had been for, for quite some time. There's part of the mechanism of a backhoe with the claws on the site and other similar equipment from time to time. So we would ask that any storage or stockpiling of materials or contractors' equipment or any other kind of materials not be permitted on this site, that it be strictly the residential site. Mrs. Covelo is pleased that the greenhouse is coming down, but has a lot of questions about what the actual ultimate use of the property is. And we believe that, that particularly the drainage and the onsite parking and use should be addressed. Finally, with regard to the court case that was mentioned, the, the history of the case goes back to two thousand four, when the zoning enforcement officer issued a cease and desist order against Mr. Werner, who was parking construction vehicles on, on the site. The Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals upheld the order of the zoning enforcement officer, and it was then appealed to the Superior Court. And in June two thousand five, the late Judge Frank DeAndrea, who was well-recognized as a judge who was familiar with, with zoning regulations, found that the parking of vehicles was a violation of your L B R two zone as it existed then, and I believe the same would be true today. I have a copy of the decision and will send it to your staff, so it's available to you. Based upon all, all that, uh, we believe that further study of this project, particularly the drainage is required. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Anybody?
Before you move on, Mr. Murphy, off the top of your head, can you describe the condition or the, the Mrs. Covelo's site? Uh, it's hard to ascertain from the drawings in front of us. Is it, is it lawn, landscape, paving? What's most of the site out there?
Well, on, on her, on her property, uh, it's, uh, it's a single family house with a small cottage to the rear of the property. And there is a, a lawn area in front of, of her home and the rear area is basically paved for parking. On eighty Valley Road, aside from the two-family house in, in the grooming power in, in the front, behind that is a greenhouse, which was used by a former owner. And that greenhouse is to be removed as part of this plan, which is, which is good. The remainder of the site is presently unpaid and has, in recent years, during Mr. Werner's ownership, has been used for stockpiling materials, soil, and that type of, of thing. So it's presently unpaid. Now, the, there is a, a small downward pitch from eighty Valley Road to the Covelo property where the, where the water route occurs and, and accumulates on her property. It also extends to the club that is immediately next to Mrs. Covelo's property and, and they have paid parking in the rear of that property. It also tends to get flooded, but the major portion of the, of the flooding occurs on Mrs. Covelo's property.
And you said there was a drainage structure on Mrs. Covelo's property. Where approximately is that? What corner is it?
Well, it's sort of, it's behind the main house and to the, as you walk down the driveway, it's, it's to the right of the small cottage on the, uh, towards the adjoining property where the club is located.
Okay, thank you.
If I may just interrupt you guys, we can get to this. Mr. Tessie has heard the feedback. Mr. DeAndrea, who's their engineer, has heard the commentary from you, Mr. Murphy. When this comes before us for an application, please stay in touch, come back and give us commentary and we will, we're aware of the issue and we're hoping it'll get handled. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murphy. Does anybody else have public comment on this application at this time? No, Mr. Tessie, are you ready to check out and come back and try again to see if you can join as a panelist? Patrick, can you try and send him, resend him the link or something?
Or just try, try to log in without the link, log in manually, just go to Zoom and then type in the.
The number and the password.
I think, sorry, I think the issue, Mr. Tessie, is the video feed. I think.
Yeah, it's the video feed.
Yeah, you need to just make sure that you're connected to your camera. I, I, the fact that you're a panelist means that it's not the same issue that Katie had.
Yeah, okay. So good luck, good luck. Play with your video and we'll see you soon. Maybe. Bye.
I'll see you. Bye. Thank you.
You'll see us for sure. Okay. With that, we move to our last pre-app application, which is, oh, before I go to that, I'm noticing that there are several people who are in the attendees. Somebody has their hand up. Who has the hand up? Let's see who this is. Oh, Mr. Cohen, I was just getting to you. Okay. So, but while Mr. Cohen comes in, I'm noticing there are several people here who are interested in two seventy Lake Avenue. If I may repeat, and I just sent the whole crowd an email. We are not hearing two seventy Lake Avenue tonight. That application has been withdrawn by the applicant. Mr. Cohen, Five Brookridge LLC for a pre-app on a set aside development at Five Brookridge Drive.
Madam Chair, may I interrupt quickly? Sorry, Mr. Cohen. I have told that to people and I just wanted to reassure that that means no one will be speaking. There will, it will not be opened. There'll be no commentary. The chairman has said what she's just said, and that's it for the two seventy. People are still wondering if there's an entertainment, that you'll entertain any opening of it at all. And I've told them no, but I just wanted to clarify that.
In other words, the application at two seventy Lake Avenue no longer exists. Mr. Aronson, for example, it no longer exists. Okay, Mr. Cohen, sorry to have barged in on your precious time. Five Brookridge.
Uh, thanks, Ms. Alvin. Bruce Cohen, again, representing the applicant. We, I was very mindful, Ms. Alvin, of your comment at yesterday's briefing about brevity being the soul of wit, and that is what I'm gonna try to be brief and witty. This is a set aside development at Five Brookridge in, in Greenwich. I think it's best shown in the, on the images. First, let me quickly locate the, the, the property that we're talking about. It's a one point seven acre parcel in the R twenty zone. Pat, if you could turn on the image.
Hold on one second. I just received your presentation, so I need to open that.
Then let me, let me go on. It's, our proposal is a set aside development as defined in eight dash thirty G of to, to construct eighty six apartments. Twenty six would be affordable under the requirements of eight dash thirty G. There would be parking for one hundred and eighty three vehicles. The, the there we are. The units would be divided, so there would be a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments with a couple of, of studios. So in, um, well, okay, we'll, we'll start either place. Uh, shown in yellow is the parcel we're talking about at the corner, northeast corner of Brookridge and the Post Road. Next one, Pat, immediately across the street is, is part of the Milbrook Club Golf Course on one side. On the next side, over at the corner of Indian Field is a Sanogo Gas Station on the opposite corner. Uh, on the other corner of Indian Field is another gasoline station. And I guess this is sort of the beginning of the of the COSCOB, the retail and commercial area. Further to the west is within really maybe a thousand feet or so, it's Greenwich High School. Pat, the, the next one, if you want. Uh, this is a, a plan of the existing conditions. Again, the existing building shown in red, there is a driveway that links the property to Brookridge Drive on the west and the Post Road, East Putnam Avenue to the south. The driveway to the north is the one that seems to be in, in use or has been in use. The driveway to the south has not been used regularly, but it, it exists and it's there now. Next one, Pat. Well, go, go back one if you would. And that is a, well, it's a landscape plan, but it shows the site is proposed to be developed, again, with the same entries, uh, on vehicle entries at the driveway to the north and the driveway to the south on Post Road with some new plantings around and with the building covering most of the property. And Pat, the next one will show at least one small portion of the building, so you can get the architectural style. The, the, the next one. Yeah, let me show a couple of these, Pat. The parking is provided, as I say, for one hundred and eighty three vehicles. There is a below grade level, which is shown here. The next one is at grade, but a, a portion of it is under the building. So there's open air parking and also covered parking on this level. And then in the pink shading to the that the pink shading is a lobby and then some residence, residential amenities, such as a fitness center and office for a manager, that sort of thing. Outside, there are some areas for outdoor recreation. There are playgrounds. There's a, a pool being planned and some additional parking. And then, Pat, as you go up the the building, this is indicative of the first full floor with apartments, showing how the apartments are laid out. Again, a mixture of one, two, and three bedrooms with a couple of studios. There is a indoor courtyard, as you can see, adjacent to the pool and, and so on. So to the comments that I, we heard yesterday in our application, which will be trying to get to you shortly, we will address issues that were raised. It's intended that this property be served by public water and sewer. It is not currently connected to the town sewer, uh, which creates an issue for us that we must bring to the commission's attention, which is that uh, under section two sixty nine of the charter, we must seek approval for the sewer connection from the Commissioner of Public Works. And to do that, first, let's go to the commission and ask for the commission to make a determination to be passed on to the commissioner, that the, the proposed sewer connection is, does not violate the town P O C D. So when we file our application for site plan approval, we will also be asking for the commission to make that determination. And then, of course, any approval that the commission may see fit to grant would be subject to achieving the commissioner's approval of the, of the connection. So the application will have that additional added attraction. We'll also present with our final application, a complete traffic and parking study. We, we heard some of the comments of the commissioner at the briefing yesterday in terms of queuing issues, and that will be addressed. It's been studied by our, our traffic engineer. So with, with those comments, we'd be glad to.
Just for the benefit of everybody listening, the language in the charter is that the Planning and Zoning Commissioner, its designee, has determined affirmatively in writing that the present, future, or cumulative effect of permitting the connection, the sewer connection, will not adversely affect the town plan of conservation and development or other town planning or development plans. That's an interesting thing because we have to look at all the other approved plans, not just the P O C D. And then we have to provide in writing a commentary on that once we've seen the, the application. In addition, the zoning enforcement officer has to determine that, has to render an opinion determining whether all existing and planned structures on the property to be serviced through the connection are in conformity with the zoning regulations. So those are the two things that apply in the zoning area. Yes, Mr. Cohen, I think going back to this issue of the egress, ingress, egress, I was concerned about accidents during peak hours. I had school dismissal at the high school, school, starting at the high school in the morning. When people are traveling and just in general at rush hour, when people are traveling, there is not apparently queuing space on that site. And that it could mean that the car's back up on the post road and you know, that's just you're in harm's way when you do that. So I would like to see the traffic report on that because it, it does have the potential for accident. I am assuming you will get comments whether there's any other consideration that would, from the staff departments, any other consideration that would rise to exceed our need for affordable housing. I, I, I must comment that I was saddened to see, and as we said yesterday, that this, this lot has been clear cut prior to coming before us for any kind of discussion. And I believe it has also filed, we were aware that it has also filed to remove street trees. The ones on the post road, the removal would be inconsistent with the approved, the greenscape plan that's been approved by the Board of Selectmen as well as the Planning and Zoning Commission. That's my two cents. Anybody else want to?
If I could piggyback on that, notwithstanding some protection of property rights, perhaps, Mr. Cohen, you could speak to this unilateral clear cutting of multiple mature trees on the site in advance of this application for the site's development.
Well, the only thing I can say, Mr. Low, is that as of right now, notwithstanding the efforts of a number of town residents, there is no legislation, either state or local. a number of town residents, there is no legislation, either state or local, that would prevent that uh, uh tree removal taking place. And so uh, the applicant has uh chosen to start uh doing some of the work that will need to be done in order to develop this property. Uh, should there be such a, a, a regulation or a state statute that's, that's in part your, in your hands? And uh, I don't think anyone would, would oppose it. I think there's uh the Greenwich Tree Conservancy is very much in in back of that kind of an approach, and uh lots of town residents are as well.
Yes. Trees are, have, have their own constituency in Greenwich. Um, anything else um from the commission? I think Mr. Mc-
Yes, uh, Mr. Cohen, um, of the uh, street trees that are existing, I see there's a few that are to remain and a few that are being taken down uh specifically along the post road. Uh, it seems that you have an awful lot of landscaping on the outside of the property line in the right of way. And there are some trees there. Um, my concern would be as if you remove a tree and then you plant a new tree. We, now we have a brand new tree amongst uh mature ones. I think that's something to be considered. Uh, I also think that um when you do your traffic study, that, that you take the opportunity and discuss this with the uh, the traffic engineer that you uh study from Hillside uh all the way down. I think it's to Valley Wood. Uh, because I think a proposal of this scale will have traffic impacts uh in a, in a very large area.
Um, not clear, um Nick, that you can do the surrounding neighborhood.
Well, I'm talking, no, I'm talking to Post Road and it's from Hillside because that's a significant intersection.
Katie, um-
And Valley Road, uh Valley Wood is at the other side of the hill. Again, through two, two major intersections as well. So I, I, just one of the things that I would concern me, if we're going to be looking at, at uh traffic, those are the two places that are really, that are pinched. Um, additionally, as also understanding uh the turning configurations of uh entering and exiting this site, it seems that both uh Brookridge onto the post road and the uh redeveloped uh curb cut on the post road itself, uh you'll be crossing almost three lanes of, of traffic uh at lo- both locations. That to me actually seems like a real safety issue, and a good study of that would be most appreciated.
Thank you.
Okay, Katie, you were gonna add something?
And I had one other thing when I get a chance.
Um, okay, just Katie, you were gonna comment on the-
Yeah, the, the off-site traffic improvements are fine to review under a special permit, not under a site plan, but since this will be coming in under a special permit. Um, that, that's appropriate in this instance.
Mr. Wells?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, I just wanted to comment that I think uh additional work needs to be done in terms of stormwater runoff. Now, if all the water on the property stays on the property and is used for irrigation, I guess there was a comment made yesterday. That's one thing, but if the stormwater is gonna go into the storm drains and then down into Greenwich Creek, and Greenwich Creek runs between uh Brookridge and uh Hillside. And it's Greenwich Creek that flooded during Ida and, and basically caused Route One to close. So if the stormwater is planned on going into uh Greenwich Creek, I think that uh may very well create an issue. And obviously we'd wanna, uh, you need to affirm that uh this would not cause further flooding uh down the hill, because you're up the hill from high school and Hillside. Thank you.
Um, thank you. Anybody else?
Answer the question, Madam Chair, if there's no other commissioners. So I, I'm curious, as you, you recited the language of the charter. Um, and from a legal standpoint, Mr. Cohen, what it was your argument going to be to the zoning enforcement officers to compliance with the zoning regulations for an application that doesn't have to comply with zoning regulations?
I, I'm sorry, Katie, I, I something just happened and I couldn't hear the rest of your question. Would you remind me?
Of course not. Um, I, I'm curious as to what your argument is going to be to the zoning enforcement officer regarding compliance with zoning regulations when this application type doesn't require compliance with zoning regulations and that it's coming in under a different statutory schema? Well, so what, what would your legal argument be for that? I'm curious.
That the, that the local zoning is a creature of state statute. And the state statute in this case that governs is eight dash thirty G.
So then the argument is the que- well, the question to the commission is, is this, does this have a public health and safety issue? That's what you're arguing is the compliance with zoning regulations in a sort of secure this way? Is that the general gist of the argument?
No, that basically that eight dash thirty G in effect trumps local zoning regulations. Zoning regulations must be interpreted in accordance with eight dash thirty G. One of the things that eight dash thirty G is place the burden in the case of a, a, an appeal on an eight dash thirty G on the commission to establish whether or not issues of health or safety, public safety are involved. So it, it, to that extent, my argument, and, and I cannot believe that a court would not uh support that argument, is that the state statute takes proceedings.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, anybody else um have any questions or comments from Mr. Cohen? Um, I did say something yesterday that I'd like to repeat now. Uh, Mr. Cohen, I, I think you were listening yesterday, but I'm gonna say it again. Thank you for offering some kind of public opens, uh, an open outdoor recreation space for the residents. Uh, it is enormously frustrating that eight thirty G does not require access to open space, to recreation areas um from residents. And I am very happy, gratified to see that there is a playground here. Um, and a little picnic area and that there's something called an amenity terrace because it means people can be outdoors. Uh, I've been trying to work with the state legislature in this regard that we have to provide some sort of open air environment within half a mile of an affordable housing development or a quarter mile, but that it's, since the health outcomes have been so poor with COVID in low income areas, that it's of extreme concern. So I'm very grateful that the applicants made an effort in this regard. Does the commission have any other questions? I would like to see it bigger, of course, just in case you're wondering. I just want to throw that in. It's great as a start, you know, feel free to make it bigger. Um, okay, anybody else um wanna have some questions? We've got a bunch of hands up from the public. Uh, the first speaker from the public is Tara Rustieri. And um, we have a fair amount of people. I'm thinking we should time it since we're still in the pre-apps. Um, is everybody okay with that, Ms. Rustieri? If you would go ahead?
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay with that. I, I'm, I'm-
Okay, um, Patrick, um, commission, two or three minutes? What do you wanna do? We've got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven speakers. Two minutes?
Two minutes, please.
Okey dokey, Mr. LaRoe. And Ms. Rustier, Rustieri, if you give him a second, he's gonna start the clock. And thank you. It just gets really late when we don't do that.
Oh, no, I know, I know.
Thank you. And your clock is going.
All right. So as a longtime resident of Greenwich, uh newly elected R T M member and a-
Congratulations.
Thank you. And a member of the Town Board of Human Services. This is obviously something that's very important to me. I wanna talk about what this is not about. This is not a project about affordable housing. Uh, it does not help increase the overall ten percent required by the state. What it does is increase the denominator. Okay, therefore not really helping the town reach its ultimate goal. I would also say that this is not about the scale of the project or even the changing of the neighborhood. While upsetting, it also is not about the clear cutting of the trees. What this is about is two fundamental issues, and those are health and safety. First of all, as we all know, we know what that intersection is already like without the addition of a hundred and eighty three potential additional cars. Um, there, what, we did discuss the queuing. However, there are many potential for accidents, as all of us know, trying to make a left out of there even on a good day is very difficult and puts us in a very high risk for additional accidents. Um, if you made this a right turn only, then you would be adding that additional burden to those on Hillside because I would believe that people would attempt to turn around in that, in that area. Again, we've got the high school, that traffic, rush hour to all of those things included. But second and more importantly, my concern is the flooding. This project is gonna create an additional impervious surface area directly adjacent to the watershed that would runoff at faster rate into a stream and into an intersection that already floods the adjacent neighborhood. And to say that just we will connect to the, the sewer system, we all know that's not that simple. This neighborhood cannot handle any more water into the sewer system. I have to ask, where is it gonna go? Well, we know after Ida and other storms in this past year, where that water does go. We have had families and homes that are now abandoned, people living in rentals, absolute destruction of properties on both Brookside, Hillside, Old Church, Plough.
Ma'am, thank you so much. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is Susan Myers. And ma'am, if you would go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Susan Myers. My family and I have lived at Nine Brookridge Drive for the past thirty years, next to the proposed project. I am appalled by the blatant disregard the developer has shown to our neighbors' delicate ecosystem, beginning with the clear cutting of the property's trees prior to any approvals. There is no room for error or miscalculation with the drainage plan for this property. The fallout from such an error would be catastrophic and irreversible. This property may not be on the wetlands map, but that doesn't mean its actions will not impact the wetlands. So the developers should not have a responsibility to them. This five-story building will block my southern light and cast a shadow of darkness on my house, trees, and lawn. We have the right to this light. Not only will it put my vegetation at risk, but the shade will also hinder its ability to carry out the vital function of reducing the volume of water on my property and interfere with evaporation. Since our properties are not on the sewer map, this process is key to keeping our neighborhood septic systems functioning and our basements dry. Not only will this building cause us to live in the darkness during the day, but the night will become bright as day when eighty-six units with multiple windows turn on their lights and illuminate the neighborhood like Times Square. The amount of blasting required for this project should be of utmost concern. My house is almost a hundred years old and I have plaster walls and a stone foundation, a pool and septic tank that are all vulnerable to vibration damage. The idea of this amount of blasting next to the gas mains and across the street from two gas stations with hundreds of students walking by all day only compounds the severity of this situation, and it cannot be ignored. There will be more dwellings, people and dogs on this residential lot than there are in all of Brookridge, Hillside, and Fairfield combined, and more than all of Milbrook. The infrastructure is struggling now servicing our neighborhoods. How can it possibly take on this neighborhood in the sky too? The fate of our neighborhood is in your hands. Please take our claims seriously and protect our delicate ecosystem from this senseless destruction. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is Amy Carbone.
Thank you. Um, I am the Vice President of the Milbrook Owners Association, which is directly across the street on the Post Road from this project, and we encompass one hundred and seventy-six homes. Um, I appreciate the issues raised by the commission. I just wanna reiterate some of them. We have a very serious concern with flooding. The ninety-five space underground parking garage um and the water that this will drain into our pond and into the Long Island Sound, the capacity simply does not exist, and we saw that with Hurricane Ida. We are also concerned uh with the stress uh that this is going to put on Route One. As people have pointed out, you cannot make a left-hand turn there. Uh, this is the emergency route for our town. Um, we're also concerned about the timing of this project as the state plans to replace the bridge along Route One in the next coming two years. Uh, we all know that the traffic on Route One is so stressing this area, whether there's a traffic uh accident on I ninety-five or simply children trying to get to school, including the weekends when there are numerous sporting act events at the high school. Um, we're glad to hear that there's going to be a traffic study. We thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Carbone. Our next speaker is Joanne Messina. Uh, ma'am, if you would go ahead.
Good evening.
Hello, Ms. Messina.
Chair and Commissioners. Um, I would like to first speak as the Executive Director of the Greenwich Tree Conservancy and say how appalled we are at the hubris of uh clear cutting a property prior to any um approvals or even sale, as I, as I'm told. Uh, we again feel strongly about tree canopy in this town, and we look to all of our neighbors to protect um that which is most important right near a school area. So um, this is a pre-application. I will stop there because I think the commissioners have stated it very well, but it is really horrific um that this clear cutting was done in this area. Number two, um, I've been fortunate to serve on the Greenscape Committee um with some commissioners, and we have been working very hard in trying to green uh Route One. And to speak to additional trees coming down on Route One is, is really um something to be considered. I wanna stop there because I wanna take um a few seconds to speak as a longtime downtown Greenwich resident um rather than, than uh the Executive Director of the Tree Conservancy and say that, that I am very concerned about the safety concerns. I had um a daughter go through Greenwich High School. I've sat in that traffic on Route One. I'm aware of what is going on. As the previous um speaker said, we have a D O T redoing the bridge there in the coming years. We have a new access road being uh discussed coming out of the high school. And then we're adding yet something else on that two-block um locale. I, I think the, the ability issues occurring there is, is great. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is Sam Romeo. Sam Romeo is um the Head of Greenwich Communities, uh which is uh as now is, was previously known as the Housing Authority. Go ahead, Mr. Romeo. You need to unmute first, though, sir. Um, Mr. Romeo, you need to unmute. There you go. I hear you. You're all set. Hello, Mr. Romeo.
Good evening, uh, members of the commission. Um, well, a lot of the stuff I was gonna uh, uh, address this evening was the, the flooding uh down there at Hillside. It not only floods when it's um hurricane season, but it floods on uh heavy rains most of the time. Um, and uh the traffic situation, the, you know, right turn only, left turn crossing highways all been addressed by Mr. Wells and Mr. McRee uh about the flooding, and I'll, won't talk on that. But we're talking about three hundred and sixty-six trips out of that site. If we give eh each, each uh, uh, you know, a hundred and eighty uh parking spaces, that I mean, it's two trips a day. That's three hundred and sixty-six new trips coming out of that site. So that's a concern, the traffic. And uh, uh, and I don't think we can put another traffic light between two other traffic lights that are already there. So it's a traffic nightmare. I'm really would love to see what the traffic engineer comes up with. I'm also curious why Mr. Cohen had mentioned the commercial buildings, uh, gas stations across the street and what's down the street, but didn't mention pathways, which is right across the street on Brookridge. Um, which is a uh, you know, pathway facility. Um, and um, has, I think, nine residents there from pathways. Just curious why it was, didn't mention that. Uh, this, as far as the sewer goes, adding to our, our sewer system, um, it's gonna be a lot of uh affluent coming out of that affluent building. Um, and to see a uh, only have to pay a, a uh permit fee to uh handle all of that affluent coming out of it, it's, it's- It's, it's kind of disheartening this, seeing how everybody paid millions of dollars to put that system in and then just all they have to do is pay a permit fees. So I'm concerned about that. The uh, flooding is, is a real issue. Uh, I guess my, is my time up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well.
I believe so.
I'll stop at that, but. Okay, I, I just say one more thing. Uh, looking at the, the uh, rendering, uh, it looks like a uh, another offspring of the Hyatt Hotel showing up right here in, in, in the middle of Cosco. So uh, it certainly doesn't make for good aesthetics. And uh, I hope that we uh, have further discussions during a public hearing section of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Ernst Schirmer. Uh, go ahead, sir.
I'm on now.
Yes, you are, sir.
Thank you so much to the Commission, also to the applicant and its representatives to give us more information. I will not repeat what was already said. Um, I have just two items I'd like to bring to everyone's attention. Number one, I'm very encouraged that the traffic, traffic flow, traffic safety study will be undertaken, but I would really recommend very strongly that this study extend into a triangle that will specifically address the area from Cosco School, where the developer is building right now another development. And it extend over to Central Middle School and then also cover Greenwich High School. Because why? This is a truly transforming project for our town and this has the potential to become more like walking space or bicycling space more than ever. And the prime clients to use bicycles when going to school are the ones particularly in the middle school. Brookridge Road is dark, there's no streetlights, there is no bike lanes. Also trying to bicycle from that project to Cosco School along the post road is very, very challenging. The good news is there is a safe way to walk, except there's no traffic light in Central Cosco. There is a pole there, but there's no traffic light, but otherwise at least there is a sidewalk. So that traffic study needs to factor in what are the school flows, not just from Greenwich High School, but the triangle, because clearly it would be very desirable to increase microability and safety. There is big concern amongst parents about the safety, that they do not allow children to go to school by bicycle, which will clearly also help traffic. Second thing, Margarita, this is transforming and I ask that a public hearing be announced so that the community can properly discuss it. The public hearing is desirable as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Um, just so everybody knows, the Commission issues a public notice for public hearing items. And this would be a public hearing and it is in the newspaper. And all you have to do is subscribe to the Greenwich, to Planning and Zoning on the Town website and you will get notices of all our agendas and we're happy to always have you. The next speaker is Vin. I am guessing it is Vin DiMarco, um, if you would just confirm that, sir.
Yes, it is Vin DiMarco, thank you.
Hello, Mr. DiMarco, please go ahead, uh, clock starting.
Okay, my, the, the main um, uh, subject uh, of my comments is pretty much the same as what the previous speaker uh, mentioned about it becoming more bicycle and pedestrian friendly. Uh, the triangle is an interesting concept. Uh, however, we, we really have to consider what's going on uh, at the high school as, as well as on Hillside Road. Uh, not just the bridge project, uh, which is, which is huge, but also the reconfigurations of, of the entrances. And I say entrances plural because the front entrance obviously has come to you. The rear entrance has been brought up, but hasn't really been discussed uh, by the BOE, I believe. Uh, but, but the suggestion is that, that if that section of the post road, uh, of which the Brookside project is, is part, uh, that section from the, the center of Cosco um, uh, on up to Old Church Road, if that section could be uh, made bicycle and pedestrian friendly, it, it would be the beginning of what could be a bicycle and pedestrian friendly town. Uh, that's how transformative I believe that, that the Brookside and the other two projects are. Uh, this may be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to make that happen. Uh, and, and we have not been hearing anything from the DOT or from uh, the Public Works Department regarding that bridge project, anything further. Uh, when, when it has been requested that they take a look to see whether or not that could be made bike and pedestrian friendly, um, as in multi-use. So that's my comment. Uh, this is something that's on the radar of not only the Bicycle Task Force, but also Pedo Greenwich. Uh, and we'll continue to ask those questions.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Donald Hamilton. If you would go ahead, please. Um, Mr. Hamilton, you should be ready to go. Um, let me try again, Mr. Hamilton.
Okay, there we go, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you now. We've been having a few technical problems tonight.
Yeah, it's all right, I'll hustle up.
No, no problem, you've got your time, go ahead.
Yeah, real quickly, before I get my formal presentation, there are multiple uh, invalid adults at pathways, up to twelve, and they're always walking in the area, crossing the street, going to the service station. In summary, very quickly, this project creates an impossible entry and exit situation. There simply is no way this project can exit on Brookridge Drive. You cannot use it, you cannot make a left turn on Brookridge today, there will be a queue into North Stamford. And you cannot have an exit on the post road. Ask anybody that's tried to put a driveway on the post road and you can't have another stoplight right beside a stoplight thirty feet away, impossible. I served, I served as an RTM rep to District Seven for ten years. I was Secretary of Legislative and Rules, Vice Chair of the Public Works Committee, focused on drainage, sewer and the Greenwich High School remediation project, which is still ongoing. I'm on a steering committee representing a hundred homes in close proximity to the proposed site. Many like mine directly abut one of the two major water courses that converge on the north side of Route One near Hillside Road. We believe this project will have an adverse impact on runoff flooding both downstream to Hillside and on to adjoining neighbors, as well as rising water tables on septic, damaging septic systems at several Brookridge properties. FEMA is now updating its two-eleven flood zone boundaries. Although FEMA only looks backward, the pre-hurricane Ida floodlines will all certainly be expanded. At the same time, the Army Corps of Engineers has plans to raise Route One to allow more water to flow into the Millbrook community on route to the south. Even upon completion of this disruptive and costly project, an Army engineer is on record saying that even expanding the conduit as planned will not prevent flooding at the lowest point on the roadway during a hundred-year storm. We believe independent studies will confirm that any large multifamily structure sized to leverage the Section eight-thirty-G and seventy-thirty set-aside formula on this particular site will stress town drainage, sewer and safety. Not to forget the myriad of adverse consequences of, of extensive underground parking. There is simply no street parking anywhere, anywhere near the building, anywhere. We also believe large, building large multifamily projects can be done sensibly and responsibly, but not at this environmentally sensitive site.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Hamilton, and thank you for your service to the community. Uh, the next speaker is Sandra Heath.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Great, thanks. I live at ten Brookridge Drive, which is diagonally across from the proposed site. Um, of course, I share all of the concerns that were already expressed by my neighbors. Um, as Don just mentioned, there is no parking on Brookridge Drive or on the post road. And while at first glance, it seems like there's a lot of parking spaces in the proposed plan, there's really not when you factor in the number of visitors, delivery people and service people and patrons of the proposed dog groomer and whatever retail space they're planning on putting there. So um, when you factor in where these people are going to need to park, um, inevitably they're going to end up on Brookridge where there's no parking allowed. It's, it's a very narrow street and that's going to um, com- compounds the parking situation, um, or traffic rather, as, as it backs up onto the post road as well. Um, drainage, of course. Um, currently it's, it's woefully inadequate and it's, it's just going to be compounded by this proposed development. During the recent storms, Brookridge became briefly impassable and the fact that this developer has already clear-cut the property shows that they, they really don't understand the, the sensitivity of this area. My basement is completely flooded. Runoff um, has, has come into my, my pool as well and the backyard um, has become a third of the way flooded when the creek um, has, has become flooded into my backyard. And of course, this issue also impacts the broader neighborhood as well. Um, and the developer has indicated that they would reuse some of the water for irrigation, but um, it seems like there's not really going to be much left to irrigate. So um, I would ask that the, um, the committee and the developer consider that, that issue as well. And of course, the sewer. And lastly, the traffic um, with kids and drivers not looking. Um, as they pull out, someone's looking at traffic, trying to make a left onto the post road, not noticing there's a, a high school student walking near them on the right and it seems like a recipe for, for disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, our next speaker is Caroline Heath. If you would go ahead, uh, you'll need to unmute, ma'am.
Atkins, ma'am, Chair, Atkins.
I think, I think the name is Caroline Atkins.
Oh, Caroline Atkins, I'm sorry, I just spaced out for a sec. Yes, ma'am, go ahead. You can, you can, you can remarry or unmarry and go ahead as Caroline Atkins.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I want to echo all the, what, the rest of what other speakers have said. I live at seventy-nine Fairfield Road, which tees into Brookridge Drive and it is about halfway from the proposed project. At the end of August, we had a terrible flood from Hurricane Ida. All of our road was closed. I suffered five feet of water in my basement. It had never happened before. All the roads were flooded. Uh, Hillside was closed, Sandwich was closed, Fairfield was rose. And this is just gonna continue to get worse. I don't see how we could even continue to have this lack of drainage and the problem we have with our sewers. Um, uh, and I think, I think as they said, it's a hundred-year flood. I think we're, we're gonna see this happening much more. So I really think it is a public health and safety issue. Thank you to the Commission.
Thank you very much and I apologize for getting your name wrong. Uh, the next speaker is Mario Coppola. Uh, Mr. Coppola, are you here as an attorney representing the opposition or as a resident?
Madam Chairwoman, yes, I am here uh, as counsel for a group of um, property owners.
That would be no clock for Mr. Coppola, although we would ask you to kindly be brief. I know that's a big ask um, from attorneys, but if you would, I'd be grateful.
Madam Chairwoman, I'll endeavor to do so this evening, also considering the fact that this is a pre-application. And there's still a lot of uh, work that we have to do to figure out what legitimate issues of concern we want to present to the Commission. One thing I did do prior to this meeting was to ask my clients if they could provide me with a list of names and addresses um, of those who are in the group. And I, and I requested that um, people hold off on commenting publicly, uh, taking, taking time with the Commission at the pre-application and rather just allow me to um, uh, put on the record uh, their name and address and to put on the record their concern about the project um, in order to try to expedite this process. Before I forget, for the record, uh, my name is Mario Coppola. I'm a partner at the law firm Birch and Moses with offices in Westport and Milford. Um, it's nice to be back before the Commission, it's been a little while. Um, I represent a, a, a rather large group that's ever-growing. Um, currently it's eighty-two um, residents within the area. I assume by time there's a, a full application presented to this Commission, that, that group will be significantly larger. Madam Chairwoman, if I may, I'm just gonna, uh, should I just briefly read into the record the names and addresses of those people whom I?
No, sir, if you would kindly just send it into staff so that it is in the pub. This is not, as you know, it will not carry into the public record. If you would like to send it to staff, that's great. And then after that, when the applicant submits the actual application, you would at that time place um, the information in the public record.
Alright, so I'll send that to staff.
Yes, please.
And again, just to reiterate for, for tonight's record, um, so far.
You have eighty-two people, we're good with that.
Thank you. Um, so we believe that there's reasons why this proposed project will negatively impact the health, safety and general welfare of the community. We're still in the process of trying to identify and thoughtfully consider our issues of concern. We're also starting to work with different experts to review and provide analysis regarding our various issues of concern. We look forward to um, presenting those issues of concern uh, with expert testimony to support um, our arguments um, when there's a full application submitted to your Commission. I don't want to take any more time of the Commission at this time, uh, but to just request that on behalf of my clients, that the Commission um, along with staff, make its best effort to uh, thoughtfully consider um, issues of concern that have been stated thus far this evening and, and to really um, try to push the applicant to make um, changes from what's been proposed so far to improve the application uh, when it comes back uh, to the Commission um, at a later date.
Thank you very much, sir, and I appreciate your brevity. And I apologize for, next time you come, we'll make you a panelist. We just, I didn't know, we'll know next time.
Thank you.
Um, uh, the next speaker is Anthony DeAndrea. Mr. DeAndrea, are you here representing the applicant and please unmute yourself?
I'm here, I'm here watching, I'm not representing the applicant at this time, no, no ma'am.
Okay, you have, so you're a resident? You have your hand up, sir, so are you speaking as a resident?
No, I am not.
Okay, so we're gonna make you go away then?
Yes, please.
Okay, lower your, we've lowered your hand. Our next speaker is Ann Knox. And if you would go ahead, Ms. Knox.
Yes, hi.
Clock time.
Sure, my name is Ann Knox, I live at thirty Brookridge Drive. I share all of the concerns that my neighbors have previously provided. So I'm just gonna keep it brief to mention a couple of items. Um, I think the first item is the traffic. I, I agree that we should have a traffic study that encompasses both the issues relating to Brookridge, but obviously the high school. I think our Hillside neighbors have certainly taken a lot of time of this Commission as well um, with respect to the issues relating to the high school. But I would also note that Brookridge is a root of egress from Greenwich Country Day and also from other schools in the area, including um, you know, the most recently uh, provided Greenwich Country Day Stadium that is right on Cardinal Road. So I do think that this project and the traffic study should be looked at as a whole, not just this particular, you know, property uh, itself. I will also note, note that there is no parking anywhere on Brookridge Drive and no sidewalks on Brookridge. Um, additionally, there, while the applicant has provided that there is a driveway that goes out to the post road, we did look today, there is no curb cut actually provided for post road. So we thought it might be helpful or um, you know, a good thing for the Commission to be aware of that fact as well. Um, I think, you know, with respect to the flooding, uh, I absolutely appreciate the concerns of our neighbors. We are also downhill from the project and we certainly have had our backyard, the lowland part of our backyard, turn into essentially a swimming pool. Um, I am happy to provide video of that, should you want to see it from the latest storm. But I think we all share the concern that additional impervious uh, area in this neighborhood is going to be a concern, a health and safety concern, um, including uh, with respect to the flooding, contributing to flooding, not just on our properties, but to post road. Um, with that, I will just um, cede my time to the Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. And with that, um, we can take down the clock and, oh, wait a minute. And we are all set with the public comment. And um, I see that the Pecoras have joined us, so does that mean the Pecoras wish to speak?
Madam, one more, one more hand in the public section.
One more hand, oh, I'm sorry. Um, that would be Elizabeth Dempsey, clock please. I feel like, alright, ma'am, if you would go ahead.
Great, um, thanks. Um, I, I just wanted to uh, put down on the record that um, I'm against this project. I'm totally for affordable housing, um, but this projected scale is to owners for health and safety reasons. Um, and I would hope that um, the Commission, uh, when the application does come in, look carefully at the externalities, I think it's. the commission, when the application does come in, look carefully at the externalities. I think it's basically, you know, not to repeat all the other issues, but the this that people have already mentioned that I second, but the issue of stormwater runoff and the impact on our sewer system is is a huge issue for the town to maintain. And as as Tara mentioned, without increasing our ratios for affordable housing, I find this from a a taxpayer's perspective, not just a resident, a huge externality put upon the town and its cost structure. So that would be one of my concerns. And as you all know, I know a lot about the traffic and everyone's right, we've got so many schools. How many more burdens can you place in this region for traffic in what is basically an essential emergency corridor? Traffic's not supposed to be considered an eight thirty G, but when it's an emergency corridor, I really think that it it's it's an issue. Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Okay, so we got more hands up and I'm just gonna let Mr. Peter Tessie speak. Mr. Tessie, if you would kindly go ahead.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. I'm speaking to tonight as the Executive Director of Pathways. As you know, we are the owners of five oh nine East Putnam Avenue. Our board has not taken a formal position on this proposal. We are interested in the impacts the proposal will have, particularly on the safety and well being of our residents. And we will be watching diligently as to how this proceeds with an eye toward ensuring the safety and well being of the residents that live at five oh nine East Putnam. You may know that five oh nine East Putnam is a supported housing. It does receive support through housing and urban development. So just want to be on the record. Now, speaking as a citizen, I just want to bifurcate for a moment. Living in the neighborhood here, I know you mentioned traffic is not considered. But looking at it holistically in terms of access, egress, safety response, I would hope that you would take into consideration the traffic coming off of Indian Field Road in exit four.
Thank you. Thank you very much, sir. Our next speaker is Peter Alexander. And if you would go ahead, Mr. Alexander, you'll need to unmute.
Yes, thank you, and I promise I'll be brief, but I just wanted to let
Clock please, yeah. Go ahead.
I just want to let both sides know we're undergoing a study of the water quality of Millbrook. And we should have the results back fairly rapidly. So if anybody's interested, they can reach me at peter a at site design associates dot com.
Okay, um, thank you, sir. Are you done, sir?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, okay, now the hands are really all gone and we're gonna stop with a comment and you can take the clock down. Okay, now we've I see we've been joined by Joe Picora and Sylvester Picora. Mr. Cohen, are these your clients and do they wish to speak?
We're we're, there's nothing to say. We'll we'll submit the final application and go from there.
I'm sorry, Mr. Cohen, I had to mute you because you answered the phone during the public comment and I had to. Okay, oh, yeah, so I muted you. It was fun. Just kidding. Little grin here and there. It's like, okay, Mr. Picoras, you don't, neither one of you wishes to
They are my clients, but they have nothing to
Yeah, I just didn't know why they suddenly were in with the panelists, so I was asking. I guess Patrick promoted you not knowing.
They felt I needed some protection.
Alright, I'm going to move you guys back down. You can always raise your hands if you wish. Mr. Cohen, you've heard all the concerns from the residents that what rises to health and safety is obviously, everybody knows about climate change and the severe damage from Ida. Everybody's worried about flooding. You've heard a lot of concerns about traffic. Our need to protect the at risk population that uses pathways. We, of course, have the elephant in the room, which is the issue of the sewer connection. That will be decided, the zoning issue will be decided by the zoning enforcement officer. And have I left anything out? Oh, the egress, I was concerned about not only the traffic, but whether you would be able to stack cars for the ingress egress. Frankly, I think it is suicidal to make a left turn on the post road most days of the week at most times, but the state frowns on us forbidding it. And I have nothing else to add to that. I think we've given the applicant some issues to work on with staff when they finalize their application.
Yes, indeed. We will take into consideration all of the comments we've heard tonight.
I have one other question for you. We do want to see housing diversity, but also in our P O C D, we wanted to see preservation of historic structures and community character. We did wonder if you had considered an H O at any point, if you and I'm not asking for an answer now, but if you would discuss with your clients whether they would consider something that preserved the historic structure on site. Or whether you had considered a six one ten kind of development, it would mean rezoning, of course, since that is that might be very tricky to do because that is an R twenty, as I remember. But in any event, if you had considered alternatives, we throw that out to you. Any type of preservation of historic buildings is appreciated by the commission as is green area and sustainability generally, but we also value housing diversity. Anything else from the commission to send Mr. Cohen on his way? No, I think you're good. Okay.
Thank you.
Alrighty, folks, we finally get to the regular meeting and we're going to see if Mr. Tessie can turn on his video. Everybody's nodding. Mr. Tessie, if you would raise your hand or if you could bring him in, Pat. John Tessie, there he is. Alright. Let's see what happens. Alright, he's in. Oh, I'm sorry, I muted you by accident. I was trying to unmute you. Okay, go ahead.
Well, the
No, no dice. Okay.
That's not, but I I have a backup computer, so just give me a second. Try the next screen.
Alright.
It's the C. It's that camera.
While
Raising my hand again.
While you're doing that, I'm just gonna, I'm just going to announce your application. It is St. Catherine of Siena, which is part of the St. Agnes Parish Corporation. This is to add for the J House to use the parking at the rear forty six spaces at the rear of St. Catherine of Siena Church during hours when it does not conflict with the church's needs. Are you ready, Mr. Tessie?
I'm ready. Pat, can you let me in on my second computer?
I got it. Hold on.
You'll just need to turn the sound off on one of them or both.
I'm gonna kick out the other one. Alright, so that's not, okay, good. Alright, Mr. Tessie, can you turn on your video? Wait, you're just, you're just in bad luck tonight because your video. Well, his audio must be on. He's not muted. Mr. Tessie, any luck here? Alright, I'm gonna bring back the other one. Mr. Tessie, this doesn't seem to be working for you. So I'm gonna bring back the other one. The other Mr. Tessie, your alter ego. And I'm gonna kick out the new one. Okay, Mr. Tessie, if you would unmute the original.
Okay.
Alright, okay. Alright, so we announced your application.
Yes.
And there are two things we said at the briefing. Do you mind if we go right to them?
We can. I'm prepared to address address them, so you can
Okay, three things, three things at the briefing. The first is we'd like to see what that access looks like. You gave us lots of site plans and you didn't show us what it was going to look like and what you were going to actually do to make that connection. Second thing is we'd like a full detail of the church's parking requirements that demonstrates because we, I never knew, some of those uses have come in recently. We don't know what they're parking, what their hours of operation. Okay, and the third thing is I'd like you to address why you don't think you need a variance. Okay, you got your video on, on the John T. Alright.
Oh, here I am. How about that? On the side.
Okay, you're muted. Okay, you're muted on that one. You need to turn on on the one that you have video, you need to unmute. Okay, good. Now unmute on that one. Nigga gets the movie rights tonight. Alright. Alright, good. You can talk now. Alright, so now we've asked you the three questions and you're going to address why you don't think the church needs to apply for a variance.
Yes. Okay, well, so far as the variance concern issue is concerned, the reference was made to section six, section six, one fifty eight A one. And I've had this discussion with Katie actually originally. And I did submit emails back and forth with with Bianca. Now, what we have to remember here is that there is no required parking for the J House being
We know that.
Be on this property. So we're not dealing with, no, it's important. I understand you know that, but you got to put it in context of one fifty eight one. The other in, and so we're not putting required parking, commercial parking on this property. Number one. Number two is that it's the regulation specifically provides that the parking that is needed for the primary use needs to be available one half hour before, one half at a half hour after the the time period where the parking is needed. This is under section six, one fifty eight. Okay, we've, now what we've done is we actually have submitted. And I don't know if Bianca passed it along or not, but yesterday after your your hearing, I did speak to Mr. Pat Grosso, who represents the church facilities, basically charged the facilities at the church. And he did provide to me the breakdown that you requested that I and I emailed that to Bianca. I don't know if she sent it along to you all or not. But it was done during the afternoon. And just so you know, the jizz
Did anybody see it? I did not see it. I saw her email. She may not have attached the table. I saw your reply.
If you scroll down, you would have seen the table.
Okay, well, none of us saw it and so
It's very simple. I'll just, you have it in your files, therefore. There are, there are three tenants. There's a Japanese school. They have fifty six unreserved spaces. We have, there is the Children's Day School that has twenty five reserved spaces. And we have tag that has eleven unreserved spaces. That's a total of ninety two spaces that are available on their lot to meet the needs of those three tenants. The lot contains two hundred and thirty eight parking spaces. The church is indicated by Mr. Grosso. His email points out that the vast majority of the time, in fact, all the time when there are masses masses being conducted mass on Sundays primarily. Despite the the crowd that could be drawn, they never come close to filling up the the parking lot whatsoever. And I I live actually now right off of Riverside Avenue. And certainly witnessed myself, but I think you all would have too. So the concept really here for cause this agreement to come together, subject to your approval, was that there's so much excess parking on that site. That's put, that really is not utilized, except when we had the feast there for that week. If there's Christmas, there is Christmas, there's Easter, and there are a few other functions that the church has. That a community service actually would take place, and that was recognized by the commission members in terms of the grander scheme of things. By not putting any pressure on either commercial streets or, which are very little parking in the area on East Putnam Avenue, or in the near the neighborhood being residential streets. The the church in the agreement that we worked on reserves the right at all, reserves the right at all times because there could be a special event. There could be, you know, someone passing where there's a funeral that's going to be, well, well attended. Whatever it is, the church at any time can tell the hotel that it needs to parking. So that's built in. We could submit to the commission a copy of the agreement.
Okay, so let me just, let me just interrupt you for a second, Mr. Tessie. First of all, I just took the opportunity to scroll through what you sent to Bianca. There is no attachment in that email that you sent to Bianca. Okay.
No, I didn't say it was attachment. Scroll down, but I I sent her four emails.
I scrolled down. I scrolled down. I see no data. Bianca's comment is that she's hoping you send something, so
I I can email, I can email it to you all right now.
We're gonna, okay, that would be fine, but I don't want it emailed to me right now during the meeting. I would like
Semi facetious. I want to address the issue of the variance. I'm just pointing out insofar as the charts concerned and what the numbers show, we're highly confident that you'll be comfortable. And the added point is that the church at any time can say, hey, tomorrow, we don't, you know, you know, we we don't want you to use the park. Now, the number of parking spaces is forty six and it's at the far, as you know, the far east side of the property. Basically abutting the J loss, J loss, I'm sorry, the J House and and the Thrulay. So the location itself does not impose any meaningful burden on literally anyone, commercial or residential. They said at the end of the day, it's it's really a community service that's going on here. But getting back to the point I was making, if you read through section six, one fifty eight, there's nothing that we're we're not in compliance with because the primary parking user here does not need the parking most of the time. If it ever does need the parking, if it turns out, hey, you you can't have the, they can cancel it at any time, the agreement, and say we need the parking every day.
Right, so what you need to do is submit us a chart that says you meet that you meet two things under six, one fifty eight. I I know that J House is a nonconforming for parking is nonconforming and was approved as such. However, six, one fifty eight also requires that you meet the parking requirement for places of worship and you will need to document that. Second, in my mind, you need a variance under six ninety four. Katie?
Six ninety four?
Yes, sir. Because you are, the church is a for profit, is leasing to a for profit entity. And that means that it is no longer in compliance with six ninety four, so you would have to get a variance from six ninety four. That was my take on it, and I asked Bianca to relay that to you. Katie, are you there?
Well, I, well, I'll let me speak. I don't see her there, but when I, well, I see her. I see her muted too, but
Yeah.
Let me answer that. This has gone back a long time with the with the zoning enforcement officers, back to Jerry Lance Fell's days and Jim Maloney's days. And and he really also and Joe, to your degree. Parking is not a use. Parking itself is not a use. It's not subject to section
The church is leasing part of its site to a for profit entity and is therefore no longer in compliance with six ninety four.
Look, you interpret your regulations and we have to live with that. Look, you interpret your regulations, and we have to live with that. I'm, I'm just making the argument in, in the responses as to why, given the fact that it's parking, given the fact it's subordinate and the church controls, that you would have under your site plan powers, the authority to allow this use.
Violating six ninety-four is not within our authority. The church must be an a hundred percent not-for-profit. This is supposed to be a not-for-profit entity, because it is in a residential zone. And in a residential zone, you have to be a not-for-profit. The church is leasing to a for-profit operation, so in my mind, you would need to get a variance. You would have to convince us otherwise, and I believe that that argument was sort of escaped everybody, because Jody focused on six, one fifty-eight. I'm perfectly happy to listen to you argue the six ninety-four.
It's, it's actually in our Arizona briefing packages. Uh, the issues recommendations, number one, talks about one fifty-eight A, but the last
I know that. Everybody focused on one fifty-eight, but I'm focusing on six ninety-four.
Right. Mr. Couture, Mr. Couture did recommend that. Further clarification from the Z E O notes that a variance would be required for commercial use to park on a residential property. Plain and simple, right there.
Just for clarity, um,
Parking, parking is not a use. That's my
Okay.
It isn't whether or not it's a use. The church is getting revenue from a for-profit entity, which it is not permitted to do under six ninety-four, Mr. Tessie. You need a variance. By the way, we're all thinking that this is a terrific idea, but I wouldn't waste a lot of time on the, the, the fine points. Go get a variance. We think it's a grand idea that you get more parking for J House, but it is a for-profit operation that is leasing from the church, and therefore contravenes six ninety-four. Katie, you're muted if you're gonna talk. I've been hollering for you. Okay. Not talking?
I mean, well, I, I wasn't trying to talk at that moment, but the variance.
To me, he, they're letting in a sick, they're letting in a for-profit operation. That is not what six ninety-four says. So to me, they've got to fix that problem. I'd like them to do it. I think it's a great idea. I'd like them to do it.
The argument, because I'm just trying to, the, the use of that property, the parking lot, it, like you said, it's not a use. There's no lot, the parking is not a use. So I understand that. So then the question becomes, is that because it's an R twenty zone, right?
Part of the site is now being occupied, if you will, providing revenue from a for-profit operation.
So that, that speaks to the, that speaks to the conditions that are placed on the institutional use as opposed to the parking lot use. And the reason I'm going there is I thought Mr. Tessie had a compelling argument, which was
Six one fifty-eight.
On six one fifty-eight.
He's absolutely right. I totally agree with him on six one fifty-eight. But to Nick's point, Jody raises both issues. He raises the, the, the worship use, the worship facility in a residential zone is restricted by six ninety-four.
Can I, can I just ask a newbie question about that?
Of course.
Do, 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 do we have precedent that, that says that the churches and nonprofit educational institutions are allowed to have zero?
Yes.
Zero, zero.
So what we did, it's absolutely zero. To answer your question, Mr. Barilak, we went through a court case with a, an outfit that had not structured itself correctly to be a not-for-profit. And we were going to deny the application, and they withdrew and came back to us to restructure as a not-for-profit, because we could not let them operate at the Stanwych Church. It was called the Center for Hope and Renewal, which, uh, hopefully has structured their lease correctly now at St. Catherine's, because they knew that that's the issue.
I just interrupted you to point out, they are not at St. Catherine's.
Well, they're, they show on your list of tenants. I'm just telling you.
There was an all approval to allow them to go there. They're not
So, Mr. Tessie, back we go. Could we have your tenants? Could we know that their parking demands? Could we know their hours of operation?
Again, that's fine. I'm just telling you, they're not
So, and back to Mr. Barilak, the only exception would be a home office use and a professional, a home professional use. We make some exceptions, but, um, for this type of thing, if the church has a for-profit source of revenue, and the church has no others, and that is a condition. Um, okay, Mr. Tessie, so could you go take care of that?
I'd like to
Can I, can I ask a question on that one? Because I, uh, there's no doubt that what, I am a hundred percent in agreement, Madam Chair, with, with the comments you've been, there, there's no question on that. So the only question is, if parking is not a use, does it, does the same thing apply to it since it's not a use? That was the question.
Then I give you the Center for Hope and Renewal case, in which the issue was not parking, but that they were occupying the site.
Right, I know, because that, with, with a use, they had a question, but, but parking is not a use. So do you see what I'm saying? They're occupying the church site with something that's not
The church is using their property to get revenue from a for-profit business. I think if we look at it any other way, we are embarking, and you know, I'm really into slippery slope, Mr. Tessie. I wouldn't be giving you a hard time if I didn't think that the next thing I'm gonna have is the local vet is gonna be parking there, and they're gonna have an office there, because we let J House do it. That's our concern. We cannot expand the commercial in a residential.
I'm very sensitive to, to precedent.
Because you're a resident. I appreciate that.
I, I'm not going to talk about the Center for Hope and Renewal, because
Good. Because we got, we had enough lawsuits on that one, didn't we?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm, nobody was a winner in that, but, uh, including, including the former chairman. But at the end of the day, the
You know, why is such a sensitive issue for me then?
I know. And the, um, so it did have a question, though. It's interesting, because this is all about primarily employee parking. So if one of our employees, uh, not the business, but it, but an individual person, um, is permitted to park on the property. I, it, it's interesting.
Is the church gonna charge rent? Are they gonna charge a fee?
The church, church can charge rent, charges rent to TAG, charges rent to anybody.
But TAG is a not-for-profit.
Suppose the church did not
Mr. Tessie, why don't you just get the variance?
Well, I'm just trying, I'm really trying to understand.
I'm not gonna
Okay. At the end of the day, I assume there's a consensus on the commission.
Well, I think I've sort of bullied them into it, even if they're not totally on board. I'm happy to
Madam, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tessie, I, I, I really think that you should be talking to the Z E O specifically about his comment on the commercial use parking on a residential property, as a bottom line, to get a clarification on that. Second of all, uh, there was no detail whatsoever how you get from the spaces you want to occupy to the site. Uh, I was out at the site the other day, and the hole in the fence probably is not gonna cut it.
Uh, that was a temporary
I'm not done. I'm not done.
But
Uh, your site plan from nineteen ninety is, does not represent the existing conditions whatsoever. I believe you have much more parking out there than you imagine. Uh, I believe it's been restriped, eh, recently. Um, and I'm seeing parking spaces everywhere out there, as opposed to what I see on your site plan. I think you really need to rectify that situation, so we understand exactly what's there.
We'll check with Mr. DeAndrea on that.
Okay, because you're saying that they're gonna be using spaces along that fence line, where the hole is? But your site plan doesn't show spaces along that fence line.
Um, I'll get the updated one if we
Okay, and I think I'd like to see what's going on with that, that, that hole in the fence. If this is going to be an honest-to-God, real thing, there's got to be some kind of a real access through there. That, uh, you know
Mr. McRae, I think was allowed just on a temporary basis, um, for the, for the holiday. I believe that was netted subject matter, Katie, of a, a discussion with the commission that allowed that. But anyway, that period, time's over. So we're fine with what you're saying. We always intend to come in with some, the, have a, come in with a, uh, a more formal plan. Um, we wanted to see first if we're actually going to have any resistance from the commission. So it sounds like we don't have practical exist, uh, resistance. We have some legal resistance that we have to deal with.
We love the idea, Mr. Tessie, and we want to help you. Um, we'll do anything we can to help you. I'm happy to tell the Z B A that this solves a much greater problem. You know, we sometimes send them an opinion in support of an applicant, no problem there, but we want you to the reason it's important is because the commission publicly approving an application that does this opens a door that I'm really not interested in opening, and you know how sensitive it is to us.
I can, I can appreciate the sensitivities of precedent. And I think this is a, I think we have legitimate argument with your help, Board of Appeals. The hardship is simply that the J House is so underparked that it's become a, that, that it can't create a community.
And don't forget that while you have the application before us, since you're addressing, I don't know, I guess you can say you're addressing the non-conformity. I did wonder if the church would be willing to sell you a piece of that land, by that, that piece of land, and you lease it back to the church. Just
We've had certain discussions, um,
Would be so cool to permanently fix that non-conformity.
Well, here's the interesting, you know, you know what the problem is? That we would have to convert that property to a commercial use. And I don't know, as you all
The old P O C D
To a, uh, N L B zone property. If you're saying there, there's
Well, let me say this to you. The old P O C D out and out forbade us from doing that. The new one does not have that provision. Commission, would you be open to considering a rezone if that came up?
I, 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 excuse me, Mr. Tessie, but I find that actually kind of funny to me. Is that actually if we, you bought a piece of land from the from the church, you'd have to rezonate to a commercial use for you to use it?
Yes.
Doesn't that kind of get back to what we just talked about?
Yeah, it, it, you're essentially walking back your argument that
Yeah, okay. Let's not pick on, I already beat up Mr. Tessie lots. Let's just, I, I don't, I didn't ask you guys to beat him up. My question was, if
I don't really understand the point. The point was
Okay, leave it, leave it be. That was the question was, would you all, and I, I know I'm not supposed to poll, but I'm, so don't vote, don't say anything definitive. Would you be open to a rezoning application that makes more commercial but solves an existing non-conformity that has been very troubling to traffic and the town?
And where, where to treat that rhetorically, not answer.
Yeah, just say, like, generally, does the concept seem something
Well, I, I'm not even sure rezoning would be necessary, Madam Chair, because it's been used for parking, and parking is parking, so
Okay. You know what, Mr. Tessie, let's give you this. You worked that part out with, with Katie, but if you were to buy that land, I feel like that would be a really cool thing to have that, the J House stop being non-conforming.
Well, we had something called the P Zone, but the
No, no, it's gone.
I know it's gone. I said had.
We know like.
Katie, I talked about that, and that got shut down pretty quickly.
Yeah, we know like.
Yeah, I said I wouldn't go that route.
I would not go that route.
We've all been scratching our heads how to accomplish it, so
Yeah, well, you know, Katie
Something here with parking being a non-use, but it's not, nobody's
Okay.
All right, so we'll
Okay, and you owe us the chart, and Mr. McRae wants to see
And we'll have Mr. DeAndrea update the site plan and show a real, uh,
And I'll tell you what, since you're in such a bad shape, I will also plead with staff to try and squeeze you in sooner than we have an opening, if it's at all possible.
That's okay, because actually, um,
Okay, you gotta go to Z B A.
Truth of the matter is, they don't need the parking in January, February, March.
Okie doke, and you've got COVID going on. Okay, all right.
But thank you all for your time and your input.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening. Apologize.
So my next question is to the commission, how hungry are you? Are you, are you, if we start right now, we may be able to finish fairly quickly with the public hearing. Um, do we have? Is, so your decision, I think we could finish in fairly short order.
I'm not sure, uh, forty-seven Edgewater is gonna go quickly. I think there's gonna be a lot of
All right, okay, so do you guys, rather than start forty-seven Edgewater now, do you guys want to take our dinner break now, um, seventeen minutes early?
I'd like to.
It's a plan, folks. Dennis, wake up, you're getting a break. Just kidding. All right, everybody, so we'll see you
I'm for going ahead. I'm for going ahead.
I think Edgewater could get long, Mr. Yaski. I do think it could get long. I know we had a lot of public comment, and I'm seeing forty-two people in the audience who must be partly here for that.
So that's over an hour of comments with two minutes each.
Yeah, so let's see. I don't think we're gonna get that many comments, but let's just eat, and then, you know, whatever. Okay, see you guys at six, at seven oh four. Or so. Muted. And Mr. Bazili, um, are you good?
Uh, hello there. I'm fine.
Hello, Mr. Bazili, and Happy New Year. We now begin the public hearing. Wait a second, I just need to make sure that everybody's actually here. Um, uno, dos, tres. Yeah, we're good. Okay, um, uh, we now begin the public hearing, and our first application in the public hearing is the Round Hill Club, Inc., for a final site plan and special permit um, at thirty-three Round Hill Club Road. Uh, to remind everybody
Madam Chair, you skipped, you skipped number three.
Edgewater?
Oh, Edgewater, I'm so sorry. No public hearing, Mr. Bazili. I zoned out. I gotta do it once, and I, Yaski was waving, somebody had to talk to me. Okay, so, um, stand down, Mr. Bazili. Uh, Jeffrey, Jeffrey and Romina Puckett at forty-seven Edgewater Drive in the R twelve for a final coastal site plan and special permit. Oh, just a final coastal site plan. Okay, I'm back with the world of the living.
Happy New Year, Madam Chair. Uh, John Hekney for the applicants. While we'd be happy to put this on the record, a, a, a regular hearing item is, is, is just fine for this application. Uh, I'm, uh, uh, joined this evening, uh, uh, by our architect, our, our landscape architect, uh, Bill Kenny, uh, and our engineer, Len DeAndrea. Um, uh, this is not the first time, uh, that the commission is viewing this application. Uh, we were last before you last September. Uh, at that time, uh, we had to withdraw and refile our application to address outstanding comments from Public Works, uh, Conservation, and the Zoning Enforcement Officer. As part of our refile, uh, we addressed some of the existing conditions, questions that D P W had asked, uh, some of the, uh, non-conforming, uh, additions, uh, that the zoning enforcement officers are asked, and increased, uh, the wetland, uh, buffer planting, uh, that Conservation had asked. Uh, we feel that we've, uh, now have a, a compliant, uh, project that's, uh, merits, uh, your approval. Uh, in addition to the work that, uh, uh, Mr. Kenny and Mr. DeAndrea have done uh, to get, uh, the support of, uh, the Department of Public Works and Conservation, uh, we did have the coastal engineers at Race take a look at this project with us. Uh, in particular, they determined that the construction won't result in any adverse impacts regarding flooding or wave action to neighboring properties. Um, uh, I'm happy to, to, uh, uh, refresh the, the commission's, uh, uh, I'm happy to, to refresh the, the commission's memory on, on the project if you'd like. Again, we are adding a conforming addition to the rear of this property. And we are lifting the existing nonconforming property in an as-of-right manner under six dash one forty-one. Mr. Kenny and Mr. DeAndrea are here to field any questions. In particular, I'd like Mr. Kenny to, to address one of the questions that came up at the briefing yesterday regarding why there's a discrepancy between the landscaping plan and the soil survey that you'll find in our drainage report. Now, Bill, do you mind, uh, taking us through why that difference exists?
Sure, I'd be pleased to do that. Bill Kenny, I'm the Principal William Kenny Associates in Fairfield. A professional wetland scientist, soil scientist and landscape architect. And we've been involved with the project not only to design the buffer planting, but also to do a detailed site investigation to map the soils on the site and actually dig holes, look at the soil types and determine the boundaries between the different soils, particularly wetland soils and non-wetland soils. And so I, when I received the, I was made aware of the question that came up with regard to the soil map that is from the USDA, it's, it's published by the USDA. And the reason there's a discrepancy between a map like that and the fieldwork that we do is that that map was produced at a scale of one inch equals a thousand feet. And it's in your package, I think it's at a scale of about one inch equals twenty to thirty, so when they draw, when a soil scientist is preparing that soil map, they're drawing lines on a, on an aerial photo that is at one inch equals a thousand feet. So the accuracy is quite, it's not, it's not very accurate, particularly compared to the work that we do with a site investigation. So, and, and at the website where you can publish or print these maps, the USDA has, has warning notes that say if you print this at a, at a different scale from the one inch equals a thousand, you're going to end up with inaccurate information and cause misunderstandings. So that, that's why.
Mr. Kenny, I feel like we got lost in translation here.
Okay.
The question was not, at least I didn't think it was why there's a discrepancy. The question was, Mr. DeAndrea's soil, which I'm trying to scroll to, showed an area which is mucky peat.
Yes.
And our comment was, since it's mucky anyway, why don't you expand the coastal buffer planting to incorporate all of the mucky area, because that's what's going to do the best there. And that was the question we asked.
Okay, great, we have done that.
We were not asking about inconsistencies in maps, Mr. Hegney was caught napping, I think.
No, so I, perhaps it was my, my misunderstanding, but, so the map that you look at there. We, I try. Our planting plan covers the mucky soils as mapped, okay.
As mapped by Mr. DeAndrea.
No, as mapped by myself, a professional soil scientist.
But Mr. DeAndrea goes a little farther than you did and we're saying, hey, why not, if Mr. DeAndrea has this as, as soil type ninety-nine.
His map is produced from the USDA mapping, which was mapping completed at a scale of one inch equals a thousand feet, so when you draw a line on that, the line itself is twenty or thirty feet wide. When you blow it up to the scale that he printed it at, so.
Mr. Kenny, the, the, the plan that you are providing where the coastal buffers are planted, I guess that's elevation six is the outside line of that. That's the actual location as observed in the field of where this, these soils are. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, it's, uh, it's a little, it's lower than elevation six, but it's close, so essentially where the C J L is shown and waterward of that line, yes, so that, and that falls within our planting area.
Okay, so actually the, this mucky peat, whatever soils is below the C J L, okay.
Correct, correct.
Okay, and that, that buffer line, we usually see that around five or so, this is actually at elevation six? Plus or minus?
Yes, just below elevation six in one spot and, and above elevation six on the west side of the property.
Okay.
So, cut to the chase, your planting plan for the coastal buffer fully incorporates all of the mucky area.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that was the question, because it didn't look like it.
Sorry, okay.
Mr. Kenny, just another thing, if you could actually clarify, Conservation had given some notes about a mowing limit, and they wanted to locate it on the map. I, I just want to be clear, it's, the mowing limit is actually landward of the, that, that coastal buffer line, or was she actually saying mowing in the, the planted buffer?
You, so she is saying that you could mow within the planted buffer. It's a, there's an herbaceous component, a meadow component to the buffer. And one way to prevent woody vegetation from growing is to mow it. You could, for something this small, it'd be just as easy to weed out if tree seedlings started to form, you could weed, could pull them out by hand. So I think, yeah, I think we included notes for maintenance for that area.
On the, on the landscape plan.
Yes.
Wasn't there an argument for mowing once a year or something, was that?
Yes, so that's one method to maintain that area so that the ground cover doesn't get overrun with like woody invasive plants or something like that, but because it's so small, likely you would just pull the, pull the weeds out by hand.
Okay, I see, I see the note, well, in, well, in the buffer management notes on your plan. So that covers that, okay.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Mr. Uh, Mr. Hegney, just quickly, did you see the current sewer division notes?
I don't believe those were available at the time that the staff report was issued. I would hope that the sewer department would be okay with us reconnecting using an existing sewer connection.
Well, it was easy, kind of. You're aware actually there.
I'm sorry, Nick, are you saying the current ones or the ones from the prior application?
No, the current ones, the ones that came in today or dated January first. The only, I think, Mr. Mr. Hegney, the only issue that they have is that they're looking for a letter to confirm the applicant's read the, uh, the comments and agrees to hit, to adhere to the comments.
That's a, a standard comment that the sewer department is looking for on, on all residential projects these days. Our clients would be happy to provide that as part of this project.
Okay. Right now, that's, it's something to be addressed during the P and Z phase. So it's, it's, I, I'll defer to discussing that a little bit later, just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with everything else here. I guess zoning signed off on this, engineering is a reset prior to zoning permits, so they're gonna, I guess there was an exemption on this, correct? Is that correct, Mr. Hegney?
Yes, and it was confirmed with Public Works based on their comments regarding how we established existing conditions. So luckily, when we went back and, and used the conditions that Public Works asked, we still qualified for an exemption on this project.
Okay, DEP had no additional comments on what was happening here. Okay, now, usually what we're looking for with that letter is prior to us moving on to anything. I'm not too sure how we can proceed, if anybody has any suggestions on this. Because it's one of those things, I think the reason why the sewer division wants this is to make sure that everybody's on the same page and nothing gets too far ahead of each other.
If I may comment on that, would it be appropriate if I may comment on that?
Yes, Mr. DeAndrea. We like what you say, Mr. DeAndrea.
This is Leonard DeAndrea, the engineer for the applicant, and that has arisen, it's a good policy. What happens all the time is oftentimes the owner, builder, applicant waits too long to start the process for the reconnection of a sewer lateral. Now, in this case here, they're saying you're going to be doing this work early on, that's, that's the positive here. And we want to make sure the owner knows that this work is required, so that when you come looking for a sewer permit at the last minute and you can't get it, you're not blaming us. So in order to get this building permit, they want us to have this letter signed, and that just makes, that puts the owner on notice that we have to do the work the sewer department is requiring, don't wait to the last minute.
Okay, understanding that, yeah, we're kind of we're in a situation here that the, where we, as a procedure previously have asked, requested to have that. And Sewer Division is actually stating prior to obtaining zoning P and Z approval, that the letter should be in. So I'm not too sure where we are here, you have everything else, everything seems to be answered except for that.
Of course, this was submitted prior to this policy taking effect, too.
I, I would say, you know, this is, this is not, not a new project, you know, we, we started this project back in, in March of last year. And I would say that this is something that the commission can consider as a condition of approval.
Because. Mr. Hegney's very, is that, it's a, it's a, it's a department.
Nick, yeah, you're sounding sound.
It's a department actually requesting something prior to any P and Z action. I understand where. Yeah, it's, it's kind of a tricky situation, they're requesting something just as if engineering or, or, how far anybody was saying, asking for something. They're looking for prior to any kind of a action on our part, so.
I think, I think that, I think you see this on a number of projects, Mr. Mackrai.
All of them, yeah.
We have been waiting, Mr. Hegney, since this began. Our understanding was from the sewer department that this was because they found that people weren't paying attention and were blowing them off, which Mr. DeAndrea kind of said in a very nice diplomatic way. So we have been deferring to the sewer department and only when they get the sign off have, you know, that people have read this letter, have we been going ahead, so I don't know, you guys, what do you think, Katie, Pat, thoughts?
There's some, there's something to be said also for staying in the system, Mr. Hegney, because if you're in the system while you're getting this done, you are sort of fast-tracked to sewer, if you now pop into the next lane over, you're in a different, you're in a different system, so it may behoove you to stay where you are and figure this out now, it would be shorter in the long run.
Katie, I, I would not doubt that, and I have to say that there is a, a great amount of, uh, uh, logic to that statement. I, I would say that because it, it is a standard permitting process with the sewer department, I, I would say that, you know, we would ask if, if we could do this as a condition. Because it won't change the sewer department review. If you're looking for our clients to acknowledge that this is a responsibility and something that they're going to have to take on, they're well aware of it from coming to this commission. You know, um, having the, the sewer department receive an acknowledgement of that, I, I don't see how that can't be done as part of the zoning permit sign-off process. Again, it.
I completely understand where you're coming from on this, I understand, I understand the aspect of it. It's basically a letter that you probably could provide in a matter of minutes tomorrow. And it's one of those issues, though, it's something that, that sewer division wants prior to us moving on it, on this, on this project. And I think, if I say, if I say okay for you, then I better say it's okay for everybody else. And then, you know, it's kind of puts us in a procedural issue.
As, as, as I've dealt with the, the zoning board of appeals on a number of occasions, the, the, the commission isn't bound by precedent. You can take each application as you see it. But I will say that I do think that an approval and treating this as a condition would be better for staff. I, I am well aware that the commission's agendas are booked for the foreseeable sixty-five days. I, I would say that, I, I think that this is something that can be done as part of the zoning permit sign-off process because of all the reasons you just mentioned, Mr. Mackrai. I think that, again, we're not talking about something that's going to change the nature of the project or impact how we are going to interact with the coastal resources at this site. This is really something that, again, we're talking about reconnecting to an existing sewer connection for an existing home. Again, and further, you know, I know that when the sewer department changed their policies back in April to look for more camera requirements and the, the CCTV, that was because of problems that occurred where people were building additions on existing homes over existing sewer lines or, or without checking the conditions of those sewer lines, because they were assuming that the lines were okay. Here, we don't have the, the problem with that, because we're, our addition is going to be to the rear of the property. We don't have the, the, the risk of, of running into one of those issues because of where our addition is located. I think that, uh, this is one of those situations where we're not going to run afoul of the sewer department, and we can confidently say here, at this hearing, that we can comply with whatever conditions they're going to place on our reconnect permit.
If I, if I may add to that, this is also a situation where we're raising the house. And therefore we have to get a permit to disconnect the existing sewer ladder, which requires a sewer department, and then a new permit to reconnect. So it's not something that we can skate on and push off to the end, it has to be done prior to actually raising the house. So it's not something that's going to be left behind in this one, and this is a fairly new policy. We will, we actually have to, if approved tonight, we'll have to address the conditions, resubmit back to staff anyway. And those sewer comments will then be placed on our plan as well as this letter going into the file.
We've been hearing this every time we say this to an applicant, the arguments we're hearing are not new. The sewer department made this a condition of our, to be something as part of our review, and everybody's pushed back on us. This isn't the first time, and we've held fast. You know, as we can talk about it now, whether you, what kind of precedent you want to set for this. I think, Mr. Mackrai, are you leaning to we hold fast?
I think, I think we need to understand, uh, Mr. DeAndrea, Mr. Hegney, both plainly lay out the case of how the procedure works for permitting from this point on.
Well, we've talked about this every single time this, this condition from the sewer department has come up. The request for an acknowledgement of what, of their comments.
I think actually what we've had, actually, I think up to this point, we've had that letter as part of the briefing package. I think the only thing that I'm seeing is that this is, this comment has come in late. It was in on the first of the, of January. Maybe the apps had not seen it or was unaware of it, that's the only thing I could think of here. Mr. DeAndrea, as he spells it out, this is going to have to go through further review with the division anyway. I would think that if we can actually make this a condition of approval and still maintain procedure to have this done in other cases, I'd have no issues with that, but I would defer to staff and the rest of the commission and what they think.
Staff?
I see the logic in wanting to move this forward, I don't see the logic in how this gets you further along in the process in the long run.
Director Duca, I, I would say that it prevents us from having a, another meeting with the commission.
We're not that bad, we're not that bad, Mr. Hegney.
Madam Chair, I, I, I would never say that. But what I will say is that you're, you're going to have a very busy winter. And I know that if I ask Mr. Little Row to put a different application on next week or in, in two weeks, he's going to say there's no space because we have to come back with forty-seven Edgewater Drive. I, I, I do think it's something that, uh, is, is something that we can handle with the staff. And I would say that you're not bound by the precedent that, uh, of any one decision. So I, I don't think you have that concern to worry about here.
Not convinced.
Um, I think.
Just saying, I'm not, look at us all, we're sitting the same way.
No, but I think, you know, as I'm reading this, I was reading this, I think actually it's, it's the comments to be addressed during P and Z phase, right, and prior to obtaining P and Z approval, is that our, our approval or is that building zoning permit approval, that kind of thing? And I don't know, are we going to be resetting our precedent on this? But I understand where Mr. Hegney's coming from.
We're not asking you right now, Mr. Hegney, I, I, I think Mr. Mackrai is addressing himself to the commission and you're done, as far as, I'm sorry, I'm being grumpy. But you have a tendency to step in when it's not, when you've already made your case.
I, I would like to make one. I, I would like to make one more case than Madam Chair. Just that, uh. There are a lot of, the, the, there are a lot of different permitting, permitting processes that you have to go through on any project like this. And I would say that, uh, I, I would caution the commission or ask them to avoid creating situations where, uh, you're. Creating requirements that other permitting processes already address. And then we come up on this on several, uh, other applications. Where, uh, the commission is asking for something that would normally be done on any standard project. And so we ask for your consideration to let us treat this as a condition.
I didn't hear you say anything different. Okay, commissioners, do you have thoughts? And please, Mr. Hegney, stop weighing in when we're talking to each other.
I mean, I'd be okay with this, a condition of approval. I'm leaning, I think, not to speak for Nick, but I'm sympathetic with the argument that he makes.
Um, Katie, do you want to say anything else? Cause there's a lot of me that hesitates. Cause when, my take is. When Rich Feminella asks for something as part of our process, I really don't like to override him.
Yeah, I think that's, that, that's a fundamental issue that you're dealing with here. It's logically, you can see the argument that Mr. Hegney is making, but. Eyes in the face of.
Here's, here's my compromise. Let me throw something out, you guys. If we're going to change our process, I'd like to talk to the sewer department about it. I'd like to have Rich Feminella weigh in. Tell him it's holding us up. Tell him we have a real packed, packed agenda, agenda after agenda. Tell him what the issue is and, and decide it with him. I do not want to be convinced by an applicant who wants to save time.
Madam Chair, I, I've had that discussion with Rich.
Okay, then go.
I'm, I'm personally frustrated by this, not, not for the applicant's sake, but for our workload. Uh, but when, when the only condition is that the letter isn't signed. Um, and, and we are in process of getting that or we have on the record, an applicant who's willing to have that sign. Uh, as part of a condition for any further motion or movement on the application. I think that's. I think that, that accomplishes the goal that Mr. Feminella is trying to do. I don't think Mr. Feminella is aware of what this is doing to the rest of the, the department and then therefore the town. When it comes to delaying and, um, and just, uh, mucking up a little bit of the process.
I hear you.
That's not the point. The point is he is saying he wants something done. The word has now gotten out to the applicants. We're obviously going to have to go through this difficult period. Where before everyone makes the adjustment, there's going to be these, these seemingly impractical situations. We, Mr. Feminella has made it clear. He wants this done. I appreciate what you're saying, Madam Chair, that we need to respect the other departments desires. It's up to the applicants to take that on as part of the application process. We're in an uncomfortable transition period. That's the problem here. But the applicants need to be more respect, be more responsive to what's being required of each department.
I, I don't disagree with the director comments. I would say that we.
We're done. Mr. Mr. Hegney, Mr. Hegney, Mr. Hegney. I asked you to stop having and getting involved in the discussion when the commission is discussing. You do this repeatedly at hearing after hearing. The commission is talking about something. We asked you to stand down while we worked it out. Please.
Madam Chair, with, with the, with the, with these hearings being held via Zoom, we don't get an opportunity to have these types of discussions with.
Okay, commission, please go ahead. Um, does anybody on the commission want to add anything? Dennis, did you wave your hand?
Our needs to be muted. Needs to. Is muted.
Uh, I think I'm on, right?
Yeah, you're on.
Uh, obviously there's an internal debate here and we're trying to be sensitive to the town. So. I mean, I'm looking for Katie's direction here. Uh, we, we don't live day to day in the town. And I think what she's saying is to honor his request.
Yes.
I think we, I, what I'm saying is we're in an awkward transition period where the applicants need to start coming back with, with the information that's being requested. This application has been here, you know, on a short period of time, a long period of time. If you look at both applications that were submitted. In this particular instance, I do see the applicant's point that they should and could be able to move forward. There's plenty of stops along the way in this particular application. If the commission wants to move this one forward, understanding that we're in this transition period, that's up to you. However. As a matter of course, I think it's on the applicants, it's the applicant's responsibility as a, as a general rule of thumb to meet the conditions that are put forth by. The other departments and that are, that are being, you know, asked for this commission to help make that happen.
And I'd like to remind everybody that the reason, no, Mr. Hegney, I purposely muted you. Um, I'd like to remind everybody that the reason that Mr. Feminella is asking this is because we do have sewer capacity issues. And he has made this a standing condition because he's trying to get to sewer capacity issues, which we know the town has. We have parts of, parts of our sewer system that are under a consent decree. We have parts of our sewer system that are running at over a hundred percent of capacity. And so he has asked us to make this a blanket practice and I think we need to be respectful. Okay, um, anybody else want to weigh in before we let Mr. Hegney talk again?
Uh, Mr. Little Row, uh. Understanding, uh, our, uh, workload, is there any way that this could be at the top of the block at the next meeting? Just as.
We'll, we'll do whatever the commission wants.
All right, done. We'll start the meeting at three o'clock in the morning. That accommodates. That accommodates all the early birds and the night owls. Um. They'll get the letter done and we'll accommodate them and, and we'll, if the attorney, um, is subject to, um. Being short and, um, we will get the letter. We will get, we will comply with what the sewer.
Okay, so we're going to, uh, the applicant is going to provide the letter for Mr. Feminella.
Yep.
We're going to put, uh, try to get this at the top of the block, first item on the next agenda. For, uh, action.
Yes.
May I ask a ridiculous question of the commission? If the applicant can get this signed in the next five minutes, can we just put this to the, the side? I mean. I, I, I feel like we're making an unreasonable, uh, request for a very.
Not going to sign.
A very big point, but we're, we're using the smallest of, of anthills to, to make it with, yeah, so.
I think, actually. Hold on, Mr. Hegney. Mr. Hegney, wait one minute. If I would be comfortable with that, if that could happen between now and, uh, whenever we adjourn. Uh, we're looking for this issue, it'd be possible. Mr. Hegney, is that a possibility to get this letter to us before we adjourn tonight? Are you muted?
I unmuted him.
Uh, we, we can certainly endeavor to do that this evening, Mr. McRae. Um, I, I will say that, uh, uh, one of the things I think is important to remember, uh, is that the, uh, Department of Public Works doesn't have the same. Uh, uh, rule passing standards, uh, that the commission has. Uh, these transition periods, they do come up from time to time as, as Director DeLuca noted, but.
You're, you're, Mr. Ma, Mr. Hegney, you are again on thin ice. We have heard your arguments. We have chosen to respect the Department of Public Works. That's our option.
Madam Chair, then, then I would say, don't listen to me. Listen to an argument from Nancy Raymer, your former colleague.
I, Mr. Hegney, I.
And, and I would say that, uh, when she was here and, uh, she served alongside of you. Uh, she, uh, took a look when the public works changed their policies on subdivisions. And asked that all of the subdivisions meet, uh, current standards. And she noted that was against Connecticut, uh, general statutes.
Oh, for goodness sake, Mr. Hegney, we are talking about something. Okay, you're done. Okay, you're totally done. We're talking.
Saying is that.
We're done. I'm done. The point here is, as I have mentioned, we have a sewer capacity issue. This has nothing to do with subdivisions. Subdivisions are an entirely different thing. They are under our planning powers. They are under our home rule powers. And therefore the commission, the commission has a great deal of authority in subdivision, as does the RTM. We are dealing with the fact that, for goodness sake, um, Patrick, I don't want him unmuted. I do not want him to continually interrupt and argue with us. I don't know how he's unmuting.
Okay, he's a panelist and those settings for, are for everybody who's on the panel. So.
All right, well.
Can we, not, not anybody that staffs doing.
We're done. The point is, if he can get the signature, we'll do it. We're going to move on. Does anybody else in the commission have any questions on this application? All right. Um, do members of the public wish to speak on this application? Uh, the first speaker is Barbara Ash. Yes, ma'am. Um, I hope, um. You should be ready to go, Ms. Ash, and I apologize for my short temper, but I was, um.
That's okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am. You're all ready to go.
Okay, great. Uh, good evening. I'm Barbara Ash from 49 Edgewater Drive. Patrick and Jan Linsky, um, are traveling tonight, so I'd like to read our joint comments. Thank you for your review of our November 15th and December 18th comments to the application. We also submitted additional comments on Sunday, January 2nd, and some I will repeat now. Throughout this process, our main concern remains unaddressed. We continue to worry that the proposed development at 47 Edgewater Drive will contribute to increased flooding. And damage both the budding properties. As the commissioners review this matter, we ask that they consider the long-term impact of their decision. Coastal homeowners are already are combating the impacts of climate change. With worsening flooding and more intense storms. While this proposed project is designed to mitigate some of the impact of those forces on 47 Edgewater. It will likely worsen the impact of flooding on the two neighboring properties. Regarding the neighbors letters submitted, some neighbors signed onto a 66-word form letter supporting the development of, at 47 Edgewater. As the planning and zoning commission weighs this input, we ask that the board also consider that none of the property owners that sign the letter. Physically above the property or would experience increased flooding by the project. Only two of, two of them were among those originally notified by the applicant's attorney. Also, we would like to point out one aspect of the letter. It inaccurately implies that there is an objection to elevating 47 Edgewater. We have not made this objection. Regarding the staff report, we appreciate the hard work and many hours that the planning and zoning staff has dedicated to this issue. Because of that, we were surprised that the recent staff report omitted the 14 revisions to the construction plan. That the staff initially called for in the report. The staff then rightfully called for additional information about drainage lines, modified plan sheets. And more detailed information about soil types in addition to other concerns. As far as we know, this additional information has not been provided. We believe that the staff's initial instincts should be respected. Regarding our objections, we would like to take this opportunity to remind the commission what our objections are. We object to the volume of the proposed addition because it may put additional pressure into our property during floods and storms. Including pressing water into the basement at 49 and 45 Edgewater Drive. The owners at 47 Edgewater have proposed building a stormwater and flood tank to mitigate the increased hydrostatic pressure on abutting properties. But we are concerned that the solution would instead create additional problems by shedding stormwater onto our properties. We are also concerned that the proposed development fails to meet current zoning rules. The new construction does not adhere to R7 zoning step down setbacks. The plans show that the new structure would be nearly a foot outside of the requirements. We also object to an elevated eight-foot terrace midyard that has no noise and no privacy screening. Finally, we object to creating two front entrances and two side entrances and a non-conforming front side yard setback zone. Taken together, these factors create a situation that uses our stormwater processing capacity. To mitigate the applicant's drainage problems while exacerbating our storm flooding problem. None of the objections that we have raised during the two planning and zoning application processes have been discussed with us. Or addressed by the owners of 47 Edgewater. Please take this in our written comments that we previously submitted as sincere objections from concerned homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Does anybody else in the public wish to speak? No, ma'am. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, okay. So we move on. We, um, have no more questions from the, I'm sorry, Katie.
There we go. We couldn't hear you as well as we were before. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. Um, so, um, I think that we've gotten to this rocky point where we would like to leave this open, take it at the next meeting. Um, and figure something out. I, uh. Put, go ahead and do it at the next meeting. It means we have to be patient, but for honest to God, we spent more time arguing tonight where we could have, where we could have just decided that. And anybody else on this? Dennis, Peter Lowe? Barilak? All right, uh, Mr. Hegney, if you are willing to grant us an extension.
Madam Chair, I'm happy to grant the extension. I, I do want to emphasize that we've put in a significant amount of work here to, to, to confirm that we have a compliant project. Um, uh, I, I'm happy to, to extend this to, to get you the letter if that's what you feel is necessary here. But I do feel that it's, uh, better for the commission and better for staff in the event that you choose to approve this as a condition. Uh, knowing the fact that our drainage design has been approved by Public Works. Our landscaping wetland buffer area has been approved by conservation. And that we have a coastal engineer who signed off and said that this project will not severe, adversely impact neighboring properties. Uh, which is, is, uh, uh, above and beyond what most coastal site plans will bring to you. Um, uh, I, I understand, uh, uh, not wanting to, uh, ruffle feathers with Mr. Feminella. I do think it's important for P and Z to have a good relationship with Public Works, but I, I don't see that changing, uh, the nature of the project.
We are not avoiding, okay, wait, wait, we are not avoiding ruffling. Yes, let's move on. Thank you.
We, we kind of laid it out. Mr. Hegney, if you can get the letter in before we adjourn tonight, that would be great.
Make sure we get the extension. Otherwise you give us the extension and we move on. Um, the implication that we're avoiding ruffling feathers is insulting. And I would like you to not, not speak to us on that basis in the future. Um, our next application, we are now finally ready to open the public hearing and now Mr. Bazili. I need to find him. Mr. Bazili, you're all ready to go. Our next application is for the Round Hill Club. It is the public hearing, the Round Hill Club for a final site plan and special permit. Uh, and representing the applicant, I don't think Mr. D'Andrea should be with us anymore. Is that correct? Um, Patrick, who's representing the applicant is Mr. Cohen. And Mr. Cohen, you'll need to, yes, you're on the way. Hello, Mr. Cohen. Okay.
Oh, hello, Ms. Alvin, members of the commission, Bruce Cohen, again, representing the Round Hill Club. Uh, in this application for a final site plan and special permit approval. Uh, to permit the club to construct, uh, a small maintenance building on its, uh. Uh, 220-odd acre campus, uh, in Greenwich. The club, as I'm sure you know, has been. Uh, in existence for just about a hundred years. At its current location off of Round Hill Road. Uh, and the, um, proposal is to allow the club as a special permit use to, uh. To build this building for the purpose, uh, really of providing, uh, a safe, uh. Uh, location in which they can, um, handle and mix and store various chemicals and, um. Uh, materials used in the club's normal maintenance activities. And the purpose of this club is to, again. Um, help, uh, the club in its environmental, uh, considerations, uh, which they, uh, have, uh. Succeeded with over the years and really have had award-winning efforts in this regard. This will allow, uh, for example, not only these, um, materials to be stored, but to. Be able to wash down, um, the vehicles that apply the materials, that to transport the materials. And, uh, provide for a, and a, a completely self-contained. Uh, storage and treatment, uh, facility for the, for the runoff. Uh, what we're showing here is, uh, the, kind of the big picture of the campus. Uh, the clubhouse building is shown to the right. The, uh, left, a little closer to the center is shown in a dark, the existing maintenance building and then next to it. In red, a portion of the, um. Well, I guess the entire new building to be constructed. Uh, next. Next, line, I think, shows it again. That, if you would. The blue is the existing maintenance building that's used for normal maintenance activities. And then for these, the specialized turf maintenance materials shown in red, again, part of this little kind of self-contained maintenance complex in the middle of the golf course. The next aerial is a close-up of the way this is going to be constructed. As you can see, this whole maintenance area is surrounded by trees and shrubbery, really designed to screen it all from the adjacent golf course, but also providing for additional screening for the club's own use. And as part of this, Bill Rutherford has filed a landscape plan showing the addition of more trees.
There you go. The more trees. There you go. ARC wanted that. Conservation wanted that, and that was the only outstanding item you had. So I think you're good, right?
They, no, the Conservation also asked if we would take a look at handling the invasives in the area.
Yes, that's right.
And they will, of course, do that. That was part of their plan.
Fragmites, yep. Fragmites, mugwort, porcelain berry, and Japanese knotweed. Yep.
All those good things. So, yes, you're right. ARC approved this. DPW has approved our drainage plans, no wetlands, and so I think it's ready for your consideration.
Thank you, sir. Does the commission have any questions on this application? Pat, you can pull it down. No questions on this application. Does any member of the public wish to speak on this application? Seated on this application is, are the regulars, along with Mr. Barilak, who is sitting for Mr. Levy. And I will ask you now, does anybody object to closing this application at this time? The application is now closed. Okay, with that, you're not on the next one, are you, Mr. Cohen?
No, I will now depart. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Bye.
All righty, our next application is Israel Englander and Tom S. Ward as trustee for a final resub application at twenty-five Pear Lane and Sixth Smith Road. And who's representing the applicant, Mr. Leroux? I forgot. Oh, Mr. DeAndrea, that's right. I did know that. Sorry. All right, Mr. DeAndrea, you're on your way in. Okay.
Are we good?
We can hear you. If you want to turn on your camera, that's good. Mr. Tessie had a terrible time with his. I think you saw that. Okay.
All right, I think I'm good now. I'll make this as brief as possible, like what I like to do. I am representing Israel Englander, who is the owner of twenty-five Pear Lane, and Tom Ward, trustee, represents the owner of Sixth Smith Road. While we have two different names, we have two family members who built exactly the same house on two different lots. I hope that some of you have gone to see the site.
Yeah, everybody chuckles about it.
Yes, so did I, but they are beautiful homes with a great view. And nice to be living so close to family. When we developed the site plan, it was a very tight design, simply because we wanted everything to be exactly the same on each lot. During construction, given the steep topography of the property and with a desire to increase landscaping and minimize wall construction, the contractor slid the driveway slightly to the north, and as a result, we had a slightly less green area than we needed. So I put my thinking cap on, and I found a way to modify the lot line simply by exchanging forty-two hundred square feet between the two family members. And as a result, we were able to meet our FAR and our green area criteria without changing any of the drainage requirements or zoning setbacks. So with that simple summary, I would ask the commission to approve the revision of lot lines. And we recognize the one comment mentioned by DPW, which is understood and had already been put into place, which is to create an easement of obvious need to accommodate the location of the generator.
And there's also a typo that they mentioned that twenty-five and six are transposed.
I didn't catch that, Madam Chair, but.
It says somewhere in here, it says that, it says Sixth Pear Lane and Sixth Smith instead of twenty-five Pear. I'm not seeing where it is right now, but I remember reading it.
I believe it's in engineering, but I.
I'm looking at engineering.
Mr. DeAndrea, just a real quick question.
Yes, sir.
There was a kind of an "or" thing here in DPW. It was moving the generator or an easement. You're saying that they're going to provide an easement and not move the generator. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct. We're not going to move the generator. And Melissa Clawberg has already started the revision of the easement.
Okay, so I found it, Mr. DeAndrea. It says the draft drainage easement agreement needs to have the grantor and grantee revised.
Melissa's working on that, yes.
That's, it says it goes, right now it has twenty-five onto six, and it's the other way around. Okay.
I agree. So anyway, Melissa's working on both aspects of the two easements, and she's underway with that. And like I said, very cooperative family members so far, and we'll work everything out otherwise.
All righty. Okay. Does anybody in the commission have any further questions? Does anybody in the public wish to speak in this application? All righty then. Does anybody?
Mr. DeAndrea, you'll be ready to come back next meeting? No, sir. I hope not.
Well, this has the same, this has the same sewer issue as we talked about in another application, so I just want to make sure that we're all aware.
Okay. For example, on this particular.
I did not see that. Thank you.
Right. On this application, when we started, and the commission took a long look at it, there was a sewer line going through these two properties that serves three other homes up on the upper portion of Pear Lane, which I'm sure all of you know does not connect through to Smith Road. As a result, we improved the situation by adding an easement, which has been written and recorded.
So, okay, so Mr. Mister, 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 wait, wait. Stop, everybody. This is a public hearing item. We don't have to decide it right now. We can close it because we can hear from DPW Sewer after we've closed it. We will close it, and we will decide it once you've turned in that letter. So we will decide it at the next meeting then, once that letter has been turned in, just to be consistent, and we'll decide it in two weeks as soon as you get that letter in.
Wait, wait, before we move on, I'm looking at a January one, twenty twenty-two from Sewer Division?
Yeah, did they clear them?
Yes, it said Sewer Division comments addressed during P and Z. Sewer Division has no objection to the proposed lot line revisions.
There you go.
Sewer Division reminds property owners to confirm that the proposed lot line revisions do not impact.
Mr. McRae, though, we have a memo from the sewer director today, though, that says that they have a P and Z phase issue, so I.
Oh, okay.
If we're going to be all about solidarity, I don't understand how we can.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't know that. It was something that came in today.
At the risk of confusing it and getting into another argument that I don't want to go too deep into, we have already done everything required by the Sewer Department. We, I don't understand how we can come late to the game like this. I don't. But I'm not going to step into that hole. I'll deal with Richard on the sideline.
No, you don't. Just send him, just do the signee thing. We'll close it. You do the signee thing, and we'll decide it. Katie, what?
We can't do that, Madam Chair, because Mr. DeAndrea needs to actually submit something for the record into your record. So if you close the record, he can't do it.
Got it. We're going to leave it open, and then we will close it at the next meeting. You don't have to do anything. You don't even talk.
All right. I'm okay with that.
You'll be a good guy. You just say, wave at us, wave at us, and we're all good.
Okay, we'll take care of the fine points, but otherwise we have a good plan, and it works very well for the families, so they can get their C of O.
And were you by any chance listening when we kept saying Lenny was the nice DeAndrea?
I probably didn't want to hear that, but I won't argue with you on that point either.
Don't tell Lenny we keep saying that.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Mr. DeAndrea.
Happy New Year, everybody. Have a good evening.
All right, okay. Well, that was rough. Okay. So I think an important thing is just, Katie and Patrick, we need to just remind the applicants that when they are, when an attorney is asked to stand down so that the commission can discuss something internally, they need to stand down till we turn to them again. Being on Zoom does not enable them to interrupt a commission discussion. Okay, and I, I think the only one who really needs to, there's only one, but just to be clear, the applicant presents, we say, hang on a second while the commission talks. The commission's got it, just because we're, you know, in a public hearing, if we were in person, Mr. Hegney would not, I believe, have interrupted as many times, but I could be wrong. Okay.
The applications coordinator to reach out to all the applicants with pending applications to make sure they know they've got to get that document signed.
Well, and the other thing is, is, is Mr. Feminella willing to do something different? Can we condition it? Can we ask him again if we could condition it? Because it does hold us up.
I think if, lack of a better way to say this. Engineering has priority zoning permit. If there is a consensus in DPW that that kind of statement could be made, that would be great, because I think actually understanding the permitting process is extensive, and nothing would happen without Sewer Division's sign-off. So if we're good to go as part of the file procedures that we've already set with engineering and drainage, maybe if Sewer Division could be a part of that in the same kind of conditions, that would work out real well.
Well, that's why I was making the analogy about the trains on the tracks, because right now the applicant is, you have their attention, they want to get the documentation into you so they can get on to the next stage. If they wait, then they wait, you know, three hours until the next train comes, and all of a sudden, they want to catch that train, and, you know, the train isn't coming. You just, okay, I'm getting confused in my analogy here. But point is, if they wait, they wait till they want to get their sign-off, that's not, you know, it's very difficult for the Sewer Department to be able to turn that around, and they're saying, we told you this ages ago. And now the Sewer Department, you know, is already delaying people as it is. That's the reputation. So now it's even worse, and they're saying, well, we told you this ages ago. So they're trying to, what the Sewer Department's doing is pushing the onus onto you, you would, you know, you could either accept or not accept. But that's what, that's what they're trying to do, because you have the attention of the applicant.
Right. I understand. Okay, shall we, we have work to do here?
Nope. We don't have any work to do. We can go home now.
Let's get the onus.
We've left everything. Wait, wait, you've got to do, I take, you've got to do Round Hill.
Yeah, hold on a second.
I'm sorry. I just suddenly, I suddenly got tired again. No matter how short the meetings are, this one was only four hours. Go.
Twenty-five Pear, okay, so just, it's just Round Hill. That was withdrawn. We thought about that. That's, okay, fine. Okay, thirty-three Round Hill Club Road, application PLPC twenty twenty-one four six two. Final site plan special permit. Advocate seeking approval to construct a turf management building in the RA two zone. The applicant appear for the commission as a pre-application, PLPC twenty twenty-one three two two on eight three twenty-one, which is required prior to filing any special permit. The commission notes that the state statute twelve dash twenty-nine considers more environmental regulations. The commission notes the club's commitment to improvement, implement more environmentally sensitive best management practices when conducting turf maintenance activities, and the applicant has noted that an environmental master plan exists for the Round Hill Club. The commission finds that zoning issued comments on twelve one twenty-one indicating the proposal meets the comments of the BZR endorse the project for zoning permit sign-off. Health division issue comments twelve two twenty-one indicating new issues for the proposal. Engineering issue comments twelve thirty twenty-one indicating recent male part of zoning permit sign-off. ARC issue comments at their nine twenty-two twenty-one meeting, indicating approval was noted. Conservation into comments dated eleven thirty indicating comments to the proposal, and wetlands issue the permit needs questionnaire dated ten twelve twenty-one indicating no action required. Therefore, motion to.
Wait, 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 wait. So then you got to do the white pines and the invasive species in the letter.
Yeah, okay. Hold on.
Okay.
Wait for, wait for it.
Wait for it.
Therefore.
Very grumpy.
Hope mama bear. Motion, therefore, motion to approve the final plan with the following comments. Per conservation and ARC recommendations, additional white pine trees shall be added to the landscape plans surrounding the building site, which I believe was done already. Per conservation comments mitigation planning should be located to the south of the existing maintenance building. The building is, the building area is infested with several of the most noxious invasive species in our area. So it's also recommended that the club develop a long-term invasive species management plan. And the commission has requested that the applicant provided the environmental master plan for the site, for the club. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do I have a second for them? Lowe beats it, I think, by voice. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Barilak?
Aye.
Lowe?
Aye.
Jeski?
Aye.
Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five-nothing, and now we can go home and.
Wait, hold on a second. Mr. Leroux, did you receive anything from Mr. Hegney?
Yes, we just did. I was just going to say, we just did. I'm sending it to you right now. It's, it's signed by the property owner. It says, in support of my request for reconnect permit, either property or any of the above listed property should comply with all the findings of the disconnect. And reconnect permits is part of the reconnect.
Perfect. I see it in our email. I just, I'm looking at it right now. Okay. So, Mr. McRae, may we, may we impress you to, what is the word? What's, when you make somebody do something, what's the word when you?
Yeah, let me, let me just do.
Yeah, you know what I mean.
Infortune. It's a good word, though.
Okay, you think about it while I'm reading this, and then we'll get out of here. Forty-five Edge, forty-seven Edgewater Drive, application PLPC twenty twenty-one four seven seven, final focal site plan, applicant seeking approval to make additions to and raise the existing residence, residential structure to meet base flood elevation of the FEMA firm maps, constructing new patio and associated site improvements in the R twelve and COZ zones per section six one eleven of the BZR and sections twenty-two A dash ninety and twenty-two A dash ninety-six of the Connecticut State General Statutes. Whereas the subject property straddles the AE thirteen and AE fifteen flood zones and has no direct frontage on and on. The commission finds that zoning issue comments on twelve twenty-nine twenty-one indicating the proposal meets the requirements of the BZR, endorse this project for zoning permit sign-off. Sewer divisions issue comments dated oh one, oh one twenty-two, requesting confirmation that the applicant has read and adhere to the comments. Engineering issue comments dated twelve sixteen twenty-one indicating recent male part of zoning permit sign-off. Conservation issue comments dated twelve twenty-eight twenty-one indicating notes to be added to the final plan. DEP issue comments dated nine twenty-one twenty-one indicating concerns have been addressed, and there was no additional comment. And wetlands issue the permit needs questionnaire in three fifteen twenty-one indicating no action required. Therefore, motion approve the final plan with the following comments. Per conservation comments, note shall be added to the final development plan indicating the no-mo zone. It is noted that the landscape plan has the buffer maintenance suggestions as required by conservation. The applicant has provided the letter requested by Sewer Division concerning reading and reading and adhering to comments. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Do we leave anything out? No? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Barilak raised his hand first, and he did the same thing the last time, so. Okay, Barilak raised his hand first and he did the same thing the last time. So I'm gonna give this one to him. Barilak has seconded. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Barilak.
Aye.
Lo.
Oh, aye.
Jeski.
Aye.
Albin is also aye and that motion passes five nothing and now we can go home.
We are home. Thank you.
Um, there's a person in the public who has their hand up. Lisa Z, how may we help you?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm curious. I thought the project to build eighty-seven units on Putnam and Brookside was going to be raised tonight.
It was. It was. We heard it earlier this evening. Our meeting started at four, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it started at seven. I apologize.
We are so overloaded right now that we've been going earlier and earlier and we are now sticking till four to four P M. We used to start at seven. But we're swamped. So we are starting earlier now so that we get out by midnight. We were lucky tonight because we had a couple of cancellations. One cancel. Yes, ma'am.
Was the project passed?
No, ma'am. It was a pre-application hearing. So in a pre-application, all we do is give the applicant what our main questions are, give them some feedback. And then they will come back with their formal application.
Okay, as I missed it, I I won't take up the script's time and I'll let you go home.
So no, what I would suggest you do, ma'am, is if you go on the town website. You can subscribe to alerts from the town, notices from the town, and our agendas are published. Our agendas will come out to you if you subscribe to that. You can pick us as your favorite people. Just kidding. And you can get the agendas.
Thank you.
It will also be in our public hearing. So if you keep an eye on the Greenwich time, you'll see the notice in the paper.
Thank you.
Um, when we're going to hear it, I don't think we'll hear it for maybe another couple of months now. But it will but it will come before us and my guess is it'll be a long discussion because they're going to give us a whole bunch of new information.
Good, hopefully about traffic.
Yes, ma'am. We can't discuss it, ma'am, because it's.
You want you want to go home.
You can reach out to Katie and she will let you know what came up. Also. You can access the recording of our meeting if you are having insomnia or anything, you can access the recording of the discussion anytime you want on the town website.
Thank you so much. That's helpful. I appreciate it. Sorry to keep you longer. Have a good night.
No worries. Bye bye. Alrighty.
We should have invited her into this sort of, you know, post session.
The postmortem.
The one where we go, whoa, you were really grumpy girl. Yeah, okay. Anything else, guys? Can we like call it a day?
Well, a week or two anyway.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have anything coming up?
Meeting schedule, just so I my my calendar is up to date in the next two weeks, Katie.
Executive session, anything?
But I wanted to ask you if you were available the week of the seventeenth. I can send out something separate, but for an executive session, we have some pending litigation that needs to be discussed. So around that week, I was going to see if you all were available.
The seventeenth, you said?
Yes.
I am. I'm not available next week at all, but the seventeen week of the seventeenth is good for me.
Pull the trigger. There's a lot happening, but just do it and I'll fix it. So go ahead.
As it stands now, I will not be available for our next meeting. Our next briefing and meeting on the nineteenth and twentieth.
Okay, so Wells, you're the seated alternate.
Okay.
Arn, take it away.
I'll try to fill your enormous shoes.
Yeah. Thank you.
What size are they?
There's another joke there, but we're not going.
And and hey, Lo, if you're lonely, there's other things you can do. You can go to greenscape meetings. You can go to energy management meetings. You know, we got stuff.
I'm I'm sorry. As a friend of mine told me that once you retire. You don't really know what happens to the time, but you get to the end of the day and you don't. You've done nothing. You've done nothing. And you used to do so much in a day. Now you don't know where the time goes.
Well, no, not not when you're in the in the P and Z indenture because you always know where you spent your time. So, okay, you guys, um.
Happy New Year again.
Think we have anything new. We should have probably a planning session fairly soon.
That too.
So Katie, to be responsive, I could attend something on Monday or Tuesday. Of that week, but not Wednesday. So you'll probably be better off scheduling it Wednesday or later.
Okay, good. Thank you.
No, that was a joke.
He was kidding. In other words.
The Wednesday of the week of the seventeenth.
Yeah, the nineteenth after the nineteenth on, I'm not available, so.
Oh, I see.
Sorry.
You know, it's just like me. I'm like in the public hearing.
Depending on what the issue is, you can sort of slot whoever you want in there.
All right, okay.
There you go.
All right, we've almost got. We still got a ton of people here. I don't know why they're still here.
Well, they're watching Dennis. They're Dennisie with us here. We are.
Katie.
I'd be happy to do anything any day that week. But remember, Monday's a holiday.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, sounds good.
Oh, yeah. So Monday's a holiday, you guys. So our schedule is messed up that week.
Yeah. I didn't count on that.
You didn't count on that?
We meet on the.
Yeah.
So.
All right.
The CDO schools closed Friday, too.
Oh, and the Declaration of Trust, folks, is before. Oh, shoot. Oh, the RTM is on Tuesday, right? So we're good because our our we're not meeting. The Declaration of Trust is before the RTM, the January RTM. And.
When is that? That's last week of January?
Eighteenth eighteenth of January, I believe. It's the Tuesday because we have.
Two weeks from us. Okay, yeah.
Okay, so there it's before the RTM and we'll probably go to the committee meetings.
Good news, Mr. Low. Looking back at the schedule presented by the attorney, we can meet actually the week of the twenty-fourth.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
You didn't want to miss an executive session.
Believe me, it's it's traumatic. This is be my first missed meeting in three years and let that be a lesson to all the.
Wow.
Newbies out there.
That's impressive.
Yeah.
Meeting. I've already.
Take take a look at your chairperson and I'm guessing in the thirty-seven years she's been on the.
It's only fifty fifty-three. I started on the commission before I was born.
Yeah, I know.
I was born knowing what six ninety-four is.
We never met a meeting she didn't want to attend.
Mr. Low, word of advice, don't throw Mama Bear under the bus today. She's.
I was trying to soften the whole thing, but never mind.
Didn't go well for you. How did how did that one work out?
Thirty-seven years is a long time to be serving this town. So I I, you know, it's nothing to sneer at.
Actually, do you know there's a ton of people who have been on the RTM far longer than we would ever dream?
Oh, well, there's one fellow who what he retired that same night, I think, that you and Katie. Pulled a wool over a bunch of eyes. I shouldn't say that. I'm sorry, but.
Dean Goss was his name. I think it was it was something. How many years was it? It was something like.
Like seventy years he'd been on the RTM. It was something amazing.
Seventy, seven zero?
I, yes, it was something incredible. He was a hundred and two.
No, which is not a hundred.
No, no.
He was ninety. I don't know. He was no spring chicken.
Yes, but he Dean Goss, I actually sat with him on the Lebanon Building Committee. A true sage. Which it always had the level-headed logic to everything. You know, no noise, no, no problem. It's like just see the point very clearly and plainly lay it out on the table.
May we and all the attorneys who appear before us aspire to that.
Yeah. Here, here.
I don't think I think we're going to have to open an academy for that.
All right, guys, I'm gonna go get some ice cream.
Oh, good. Pour some scotch on it. It's really good that way.
Kalua.
Oh, perfect.
Good night.
Bye.